Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, good evening. We are reconvening into open session and I'd like to turn to our city attorney to find out if there's an announcement of anything that happened in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. As previously announced, the City Council went into closed session to discuss the items identified on the five o'clock agenda. The City Council gave direction to both its negotiators and to the city attorney. There was no other reportable action taken.
All right, thank you. So that closed session is adjourned. All right, we're gonna log in here. Wasn't that exciting? Okay, all right. So now, welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting. And, let's see. What the heck? Okay, here we go. There's a lot of different scripts here, so bear with me, there's a lot of colors going on, none of them are pink, so I gotta work on this. All right, I'd like to call the open, regular meeting to order. And we'll do a pledge to the flag, and I'm actually gonna call on somebody in the audience to help us out, I'm gonna look at Bella Jacobson. If you could come up here, I know you've done this before, and lead us in a pledge, that would be great.
You're not gonna get a certificate though, because we have one already. Put your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bella. I knew she'd rise to the occasion. Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Chirillian?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lesser?
Here.
Mayor Hoeworth? Here. Excellent. Okay. Okay, get over to... All right, so for our first ceremonial, I see some gentlemen in uniform, and I think they're here for this occasion. We would like to recognize and present a certificate of commendation to our Fire Chief Mike Lang, who is retiring, both from the City of Manhattan Beach and his service in the fire service. So I'd like to call Fire Chief Lang down, and if I could have Tullian Marzakanian make some remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we recognize Fire Chief Lang for his distinguished 32-year career in fire service and four years of dedicated leadership in Manhattan Beach. For so many reasons, his leadership has left a lasting impact on the department and the community. His exceptional work ethic aside, what makes Fire Chief Lang stand out as a human being is his kindness, his honesty, and his pure heart. On behalf of the City Council, city staff, and all Manhattan Beach residents, thank you, Chief Lang, for four years of selfless service. You have left our department stronger, our community safer, and our city far improved. So, thank you.
Can you hear me? Nope, now you can, thank you. Bear with me, because I have newly acquired braces, so I have to read this. A certificate of commendation. Whereas Michael Lang has dedicated several years of service to the City of Manhattan Beach in the fire department as fire chief, whereas Chief Lang earned his Bachelor's of Science in Occupational Studies from Cal State Long Beach, sorry, and obtained a certificate in executive leadership from the University of Southern California, and whereas during his tenure at the City of Manhattan Beach, Chief Lang brought decades of experience and steadfast commitment to modernizing operations, this is true, and enhancing public safety, and whereas your leadership fostered stronger community partnerships, strengthened relationships with regional safety partners, and left a lasting impact on both the community and the fire department. Whereas you enhanced emergency response capabilities by establishing a second rescue ambulance for daily staffing, ensuring greater readiness and support for the community, and whereas he strengthened the fire prevention bureau and emergency preparedness, Amanda's over there filming, functions by hiring a fire marshal, senior fire inspector, fire inspector, and full-time emergency preparedness administrator, and you further expanded staffing. That's a lot. You haven't been here for 32 years? No, okay. Staffing by hiring a full-time senior management and analyst, and overseeing three firefighter hiring processes, resulting in the addition of 13 new firefighters. Whereas Chief Lang expanded internal promotional opportunities, fostering an environment for career advancement and succession planning by implementing promotional examinations resulting, I'm so sorry, in appointments of one deputy fire chief, two division chiefs, four fire captain paramedics, and four engineer paramedics. Whereas Chief Lang's contributions as City Manhattan Beach Fire Department include finalizing the Fire Station Two rebuild project, replacing an engine pumper, securing funding for a future quintuple combination pumper? Another engine, okay. I mean, it says it here, but you know, I gotta know what it is. Establishing the department's first deputy fire chief, and whereas the City Council, my colleagues wish to commend you, Chief Lang, for your dedication to local public administration and your significant contributions to both the City of Manhattan Beach and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, on behalf of the residents and citizens of the city, do hereby award this commendation to Fire Chief Michael Lang. This is still on. Echo what Tullian said, there's so much that you've accomplished here in such, really, a short amount of time. I just want to thank you for your calm and steady leadership. I feel like, I said this the other day in a sort of, you know, departmental celebration we had, but I felt like if there's anything going wrong in the city, or anything going on, all I had to do is look over at Chief Lang, and I was okay. You just provided such steady, sure-footed leadership, and that's actually remarkable. And I want to thank you for that. But I'll ask my colleagues if there's anything they want to say, but then we'd want to hear from you. But if anybody else wants to say anything, you know, everything's, a lot of things have been said, but...
I'll say something.
Okay.
Sure. I'm just gonna echo the comments. You have brought so much value to our community, and it's going to outlast your service here. And I think that's the greatest any of us can wish for our service to our community. You've set up systems, you've provided calm, as the mayor indicated, and you've provided competent leadership, and for that, I'm grateful. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Michael? How lucky are we as a community, as a city, our residents, to have a fire chief of this caliber? A right person at the right time. You came in, no-nonsense, at the ground running, you knew what you needed to do. Although, it was a lot of moving parts, but you got it done. You know, I've had the pleasure of working with you for at least the three years of my former, as finance director. And, little story, it was about, I don't know, a month in, a couple of weeks in, he already had analyzed the fleet and comes in, he's like, "I need a fire engine. I need a fire engine." I'm like, "Well, we haven't bought one of those in like 20 years." He's like, "Exactly." So I was like, "What do they run now?" He's like, "Oh, a million, million and a half." So, it took about four years to build, but he not only got that one, but then he got the second one and the hopper now, we're gonna get in another four years. So, not just those, but you stood up, you know, part of the leadership of Fire Station Two, you had the pleasure of being here for that as well. And just the can-do attitude for everything that you did, you touched and you made it work better. So I've had the pleasure of working with you. Congratulations, and well done.
Thank you. All right. Okay, go ahead.
So Chief Lang, I was with you with all those four years, and as was said, you've made a tremendous improvement here in Manhattan Beach, and it's gonna be a fantastic legacy. I just personally want to thank you for providing that kind of steady leadership. The residents of Manhattan Beach, you know, thank you as well, so enjoy it. Seriously retiring now? Okay. Well, enjoy it, and don't forget to find your way back here from time to time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And last, little pressure there. No, but I joked earlier, at the previous celebration for your retirement, that, you know, I'm not gonna take offense to the fact that I've only been here for six months and he's on the way out, so. But he's left our city in such better, firmer footing. I've talked to a lot of the guys in the fire department, and I can say across the board, everyone has been nothing but positive about the work and the leadership that you're leaving us. And I so appreciate that, even though you're not here to be here during my term, I know that we're in better hands, and I'm looking forward to seeing the fruits of your labor continue to grow. So thank you, and happy retirement. We're all gonna, we've all been invited to visit Idaho, by the way.
That's not true. Chief, would you grace us with a few words?
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for showing up for the community. I truly fell in love with this community. I grew up not too far, I talked to my celebration, literally probably 10 miles down the road. Linwood Fire came out when I was about five years old, helped my grandfather, and from that point on, that's all I wanted to do was be a firefighter. And finished my career 10 miles down the road. City Manhattan Beach is truly a blessing for me and my family. The joy to work with all the staff here, we have phenomenal staff from, at the executive team down to the newest hire. I mean, we hire here in Manhattan Beach quality people, and working with quality. City Council's been phenomenal, ton of support, and I really appreciate that. And to my guys up here, the support they've given me, it struggles at times, but I think we're on the right, I know we're on the right track, and there's a lot of talent within this department that's gonna continue to forge forward for many years to come. For my new boss, I just wish I could've worked with her a little longer, because she's phenomenal. I know you know that. And just all my department colleagues, it's been a pleasure working with you. And to, like I said, all the community, I haven't ran into somebody that's hasn't been very inviting, very complimentary, and just been a beautiful community to work for. I appreciate it.
It really has, really, really has been an honor to have you here, and it's my honor to offer you a city pin to add to your... I don't know, I don't know what the protocol is, but you'll figure it out. So thank you again for your service, and we're going to do the pictures that we do. Oh, wait, the guys are coming down. Oh, the guys are coming down, you better, you can come down, we'll get professional pictures. Oh, the firemen are coming down, go ahead.
We're excited. Good to see you guys.
We have to hurry in case there's a call. Yeah, we've got to hurry.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you, Brianna.
Okay. All right, everybody's good. I'll give the others time, you'll do it like this. Okay, all right. Okay.
All right, there we go. I'm gonna get some this way, too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. You should, you probably should, wait. It's not mine. Okay. All right. Thanks, guys, and thank you, residents, for not making them leave on a call. And now we want to thank some of our outgoing commissioners. So we have several students who have either, are either graduating or moving on of their service. And so first, I want to find out, and I don't know, is Leverick Commissioner colleague, Sidney Huber here? Okay, we want to thank her for her service, and we will make sure that she gets her very cool plaque. Stephanie Bond, come on down. You'll think twice before.
Oh, you will.
Here you go. Please stay up here, and we'll take a picture, okay? And Parks and Recs Recreation Student Representative, Isabella Jacobson. This is, yeah, here we go. Rising senior, right?
Yes.
Junior, you're a rising junior.
Yes.
Oh my, overachiever, no, she's... And is Anthony Pianos here? I don't think he is. He's, he graduated though, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so he graduated. So we'll make sure they get their plaques, but especially, well, I was going, he's not here, so, but you can hold it if you want. I already called Sidney, she's not here. But really, to Bella, I know that you guys, students today have a lot more to do than we did. I mean, a lot of obligations, a lot of things they have to do. So thank you for spending the time. And Stephanie, thank you for, you're, you know, extraordinary human, and thank you for giving your time to the city. So we appreciate it, and let's bring it in. And Nina, you can't stand next to her, because you're both wearing orange, and we just have to...
Spread out the color.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Good for work. Okay.
Thank you for coordinating.
Oh, my God.
Oh, yeah, go, Brad.
And I've known her since she was...
I'm already...
This guy knows something.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Oh, wait, Sidney, too. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, all right. I think, I think that's it.
I got trapped.
Okay. That's it, listen in my chair. Okay. All right. Lot of moving pieces. All right. Okay, so, before we do the approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances, I'd like to ask my colleagues if we, you would support moving the city manager's report before the consent calendar. So, do I have to, Madam City Clerk, do I have to make a motion for that, or can we approve the agenda with that correction?
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
I'd be approving the agenda as amended.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Are there any other items that...
Well, that's what I'm looking, are there any other items that...
Oh, yeah, as far as, I want to pull number eight, please.
Okay. Okay.
Number 15.
Number 15. And we'll, yeah. Okay. All right, so I'd like, I made the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
One second.
Okay.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so now, this is the time for City Council and community organization announcements of upcoming events, so not the public comments, per se, but Josh Murray's gonna show us how it's done. You get one minute for this, this section.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. In a joint effort between LA County Library and the City of Manhattan Beach, a consultant has been retained to perform a library needs assessment for the community. I'd like to invite any interested resident to attend one of the needs assessment information gathering sessions I will list now. Monday, June 23rd at 10:00 a.m., the senior focus group will occur during the city's senior program at the Jocelyn Center. Again, that will be Monday, June 23rd, 10:00 a.m. Wednesday, June 25th, 6:30 p.m., a general focus group will occur at the library meeting room. Sign-up is required at surveymonkey.com/r/mblfocusgroup. MBL Focus Group. Thursday, June 26th at 4:00 p.m., a teen focus group will happen during the library's teen advisory board meeting in the library meeting room. And Monday, July 14th at 4:00 p.m., the library...
It's okay, Josh.
Okay. Monday, July 14th at 4:00 p.m., the library commission meeting, right here in council chambers. And I'd also like to let the community know that we will be closed on Thursday, June 19th, in observance of the Juneteenth holiday, and I thank you for your time.
Question?
Yes. Josh, can you explain a little bit more what this library needs assessment is for members of the public that might be hearing this for the first time and wonder what these meetings are about?
Sure. So, we have retained consultants who is performing needs assessments and asking community members and various stakeholders what sort of library services this community desires and needs to become successful. So, our staff have already participated in a partial needs assessment, and it went really well, so anybody with any sort of library interest, I would encourage to attend one of these sessions. Let the consultants know what you feel the library can offer to the community, where you feel the direction of the library should be going, and what you think the future of the library can be. And, once we have a needs assessment, we can roll with it.
Thank you.
You can roll with it, I like that. And are we putting up on our socials, not just the library, but we're putting up on our socials, tell people, okay, great. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, other community announcements?
Good evening, my name is Alexandria Latranya, the Communications and Civic Engagement Manager. I wanted to announce three really special events for Juneteenth. The first one is our Juneteenth ceremony, and it's gonna be held at Bruce's Beach Park on the 19th, on Thursday, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., and we're just inviting the community to join us as we celebrate Black joy and freedom at Bruce's Beach Park. And the public is welcome to Park at Grandview Elementary. So we have parking available there, as parking will be very limited around the park. And please just walk down to the ceremony next. If you want to mark your calendars, actually, for the INBAK one, if you want to show that one, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
This is a newer event that we recently added, but it's really exciting. It's, INBAK is going to be hosting an artist talk with Keith McGruder on June 20th at 7:00 p.m. And this is a free event that will host the artist discussing his powerful exhibition, Let Me Fix You a Plate, and if you haven't seen it yet, please go take a look at it. And he's gonna explore that his ancestry, Black cultural traditions through vibrant watercolors and sculptures. You can learn how food, quilt, and butterflies become powerful symbols of memory and identity in his art. So it's a really special event on Friday, June 20th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Art Center.
Right, INBAK is Manhattan Beach Art Center.
Sorry, I realized that, that I didn't say that. Shorthand is INBAK, but it's our art center. And then finally, on Sunday this weekend, so it's a full weekend of Juneteenth celebrations, we're going to have our concert from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Polywog Park, and we have a fantastic lineup. There's gonna be some performances, live music, performances by Southside Symphony, a poetry jam by the Maricosta Black Scholars Union, food vendors, and plenty of family fun, so please bring your blankets and roll up to the park and then help us celebrate in the park at Polywog.
Thank you so much. Okay? More announcements of community events? Okay, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. All right. Now, public comments. You may provide public comments on any matter that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, including items on the agenda. If you speak now on something that's on the agenda, you cannot speak again on that item. And, but if you decide not to speak now, like something that's on our agenda, you get to come back up and speak, or come up then. You have three minutes, okay? And, you know, we'll try not to cut you off, but in mid-sentence, but try to stick to that limit. Okay? So you come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Hoeworth and City Council, Maureen McBride. I own Tabularosity Essentials. I'm also on the boards of the Downtown Business and Professional Association and the Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to congratulate two just incredibly spectacular women in our community that had some very exciting news last week that was announced. And coming back to us, to the Downtown Business Association as Executive Director is Kelly Stroman, and moving on to be the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce is Jill Lampkin. And I just can't express enough how incredibly powerful and skilled, and what great leadership these women have. They're visionaries, they're collaborative, they love our community so much, and I think they're going to make such a difference in both organizations. So on behalf of all of us, I would like to just really welcome Kelly into the Downtown Business Association after six years, and wish Jill just absolute the best of luck in the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
And then is Eric Lee still here, or is he, is he gone?
He's on vacation.
He's on vacation? Okay. I just, for Eric Lee, just very, very quickly, I wish he was here, because I would just like to express what an incredible leader Eric has been in his position and role with, with the city. I've been in, I've had a business here for 25 years, I've worked with a lot of you on all kinds of different issues, and the way that Eric has managed his role, his thoughtfulness and how he considers issues and problems, and he's very resolution-based. He spends as much time meeting with the small guys as he does with the big guys, and he has just done really incredible things in so many different avenues in our downtown. And I just, I wish he was here for all of us to just really personally thank him, because I mean, one of a kind, and we'd be so lucky to have somebody move into that role that is, you know, anywhere close to what Eric has done. So I just want to congratulate him, wish him all the best, wish you all the best. Yeah, but thank you so much for indulging me.
Oh, thank you for the announcements, those are important. Hello, Kelly?
Hello, I'm Dr. Kelly Stroman. I just wanted to reintroduce myself, I didn't know Maureen was gonna come, so thank you, Maureen, for the introduction, and yes, good evening, council, everybody. I am Kelly Stroman, the returning, new Executive Director for the Downtown Business Association. It's been about seven years since I was in the seat, so life goes full circle, and here I am back. And a couple just big thank yous to everybody who I've met, who's reached out to me, I've already had conversations with, or scheduled meetings across the board, so many staff members, police, fire, everybody. And it makes my return very comfortable and easy, and I kind of feel like I'm coming home. So I'm very happy to be here, and there's great things happening in the city. I'm very fortunate to inherit a very robust business association, which by the way, in my research and just tidying up things, the Downtown Business Association turns 40 years old this year, not the bid, but the association.
Holy cow.
In July, they turned 40. So it is obviously a very strong, wonderful group, it's made a huge difference in the city. So I also want to thank Eric Zandlet for all his work to reopen Lot 3, is Eric here. Amazing work, and all the city staff who were a part of that. I was one of the first cars that pulled in by chance that Friday, I was going to Trilogy Spa before I started back here, and Eric was blood, sweat, literally blood on his neck, sweat and tears. So, in his work clothes, I'm like, "You go, Eric." So anyways, thank you so much, it's a pleasure to be back, and I look forward to working with Jill at the chamber and all my colleagues in downtown.
Welcome back. Okay. Hello, welcome.
Hello, council, and thank you for your time and hopefully your attention. My name is Noah Duke Frank, and I got to be one of the luckiest boys in the world growing up right here in Manhattan Beach. I walked hand-in-hand with my mom to Grandview and learned to drive on the way to Maricota. Half of my favorite memories must be right here at our beach. The feeling of belonging to such a beautiful place is an immense privilege that I hold very dear to my heart. I think this privilege is why recent events, particularly in the greater LA County and our close neighboring cities, have disturbed me so deeply. My concern is the seemingly intentional deformation of our legal framework that already exists to protect the hard-fought civil rights of all people in the United States, regardless of citizenship or employment status. These last few weeks have been frightening, even for me and my friends. Concerned and stuck at UCLA for finals, I knew all I could do was call my local police department office and ask what their response to something like an ICE raid would be. I was given the same line we must have all heard now from LAPD and districts like it, "We will not help or assist ICE." Unsatisfied with this general answer, I pressed further, posing a pretend scenario where I was watching people in masks without badges that looked like ICE agents in unmarked cars taking a neighbor or a friend that I knew, shoving them into a car, in fact, I knew they were a citizen, shoving them into a car and taking them to an unlocation. I was given the same answer, "Our local police department would not get involved." Significant protests, however, would warrant a response, destructive or not. That answer was chilling to hear, and it is why I'm here now. How am I or any of us residents supposed to know if an ICE agent is really an ICE agent at all? If they are a real agent, how can I make sure they're adhering to their governing laws? Unless we are at the border, an ICE agent still needs either a warrant or reasonable belief that a person is not a citizen in order to arrest. In our city, is the color of your skin and not enough IDs in your pocket probable cause? Already, there is fear and confusion in our city. People are avoiding our beautiful parks and our okay buses. To my city council, my mayor, my police chief, I'm telling you all that this equivocation is not enough for us. If the only thing that puts our police force to work is protests obstructing ICE operations, who are you really protecting? The federal agents or our residents? I'm asking for clarification on our police department's purpose, and I'm calling on all residents of Manhattan Beach to ask themselves and each other what kind of American patriots and what kind of city we want to be. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Hi, Ray Joseph. Unfortunately, SB 79 passed through the Senate and is now going to the Assembly. It only passed by one vote. So that is actually good news. It wasn't unanimous. So we've got to fight this thing as it goes to the Assembly. And we're going to need to get the word out and get all these assemblymen to vote no or abstain, which is effectively a no vote, and to block this thing. Because if you're within a quarter mile of a bus stop and there's a bunch of them surrounding us, you can build a 75-foot building. If you're within a half mile, 55-foot building. I believe override all local zoning. I've heard, when I was listening to the Sacramento session when SB 79 was going through, you heard all these senators go, "Oh, well, we need this in our neighborhood." Well, then zone for it, because locally, you can zone however you want to zone. And so they could do that locally. They don't have to do it statewide. So these assemblymen need to understand that all they have to do is reach out to their city councils, go, "Why don't we do this in select neighborhoods? We got to get away from Sacramento's overreach and trying to take away our local zoning and fight it any which way we can." So if there's a way for Manhattan Beach to get out the word in the next week or so for people to start calling into assemblymen, to let their friends in other parts of the state know to call their assemblymen to get people to block this, that would be great. Because we got to stop this and fast, because it's going to destroy our community. Next thing you know, we're going to have 75-foot tall buildings all along Manhattan Avenue, along Highland, along Pacific, you name it. They're going to be all over the place. So we got to fight this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Good evening, Mayor Haworth and City Council. Good evening, everybody. My name is Laura Munchow, and, can you guys hear me? Yeah?
Yeah.
I feel like I need to calm down. I just want to address just something that's been affecting myself and my neighbors for probably the past, I don't know, three, four, or five years. And those are the city trees that are in the greenbelt directly in front of my home. And in March 2022, major tree pruning took place in the area, and these trees right in front of my house, there were birds nesting, so they'd never trimmed the trees, which is great. I understand. They posted it, all good. But they never came back and trimmed the trees. And in subsequent years, with the storms and the rain and everything that happens, these trees grow and grow and grow. And all the trees there are higher than all the neighboring trees. So even though I know there isn't a view ordinance, this is something that I would still like to address. Because living there, it always used to be that they would just come and trim the trees and kind of top them to protect our views. And that seems to be that things have changed. I've been in contact with Ernest Aria and also Joe Franklin, who came and took some pictures and was really trying to help me out. And he referred me to Eric Lee, who was also just so gracious and tried to be helpful. But the same thing happened. It was the roadblock of, this is the way we do it, these are the rules, there are no view ordinances except for the, except for the walk streets, I guess. And it's been very frustrating. So I, you know, I was just about ready to give up, but then Eric said, "Oh, you know, we're going to, we're going to take another look at this." So I was like, okay, great. Then I get an email from Ernest Aria. "Oh, we are going to send somebody out on June 16th yesterday, and we will trim three to six inches." And I thought it was a typo, because it should be three to six feet. So if you think about the requirement, and I've got copies of it all, and you probably have them too, and you probably see the pictures, hopefully, that Joe sent me. The way I read it and the way it was explained to me, that it's 20% per year of the new growth. So if you figure in three years, with all the growth we've had with the rain, it's got to be feet, 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 not inches. So it was kind of a slap in the face yesterday. It's like, I had hope. The trucks came, they blocked off the street, we had a crew of, I don't know, three or four people, and I'm thinking, ka-ching, how much did this cost? Four hours. I could have went out there with scissors to see what they trimmed. They were up there with the cherry picker and the trucks and trimmed this much. So you could, you could look on the ground and see there was nothing to pick up. And so I thought, this is ridiculous. So that's my frustration. And the trees, if you're looking at them, those two trees look really... Okay, sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Laura's next-door neighbor, Stephanie Hubbard, 1300 North Ardmore. So I'll just pick up where she left off. I've actually been in contact with the tree people since 2015 and the city council. I've sent emails to many of you. You've seen them. I've sent pictures. And I usually get like, oh, we're so sorry, there was a this or it was that, a sort of like, city council thinks, we wouldn't do that. But then when I get to the urban forester, it's like a totally different story. And they've came, they've come out, the last time they came out three years ago, they actually did cut more than yesterday. But they still didn't really do anything about the height. The pictures that I sent you, I don't know if they can be seen, but they show that there's still like straggly branches hanging off the trees. There's dead tree everywhere. There's trees growing into trees. The giant tree in front of our two houses was barely trimmed nine years ago and wasn't trimmed six years ago, and we are not exaggerating. When she said four hours, they weren't spending four hours on that tree. They spent four hours all along Ardmore, from Manhattan Beach Boulevard to 15th Street for four hours. But they only, you could see it falling. It was like this. I don't even think it was six inches. So just think about the rainstorms we've had, where everything was growing. I had to, I couldn't even keep the weeds out of my bricks because everything's just growing so fast, and these things are going up feet. I have a 30-foot house. My third floor is 30 feet up. When I bought my house, it was a single-story house with, with views of the ocean out all my windows. When we went up to second floor, still had views everywhere. Now I have a three-story house, same house, every one of my children was born in a different renovation. I have no view. So I can't tell you how angry I am to have bought a house on a corner. I went to every single Metlocks meeting for five years to make sure that no bridges or buildings or anything obstructed my view, and I have no control over these trees. And frankly, it's just starting to feel like the conversations are like, look, you guys, this is how it is, you don't control it, we do. And that isn't a good feeling, because we are good neighbors, we are good neighbors to shade, Metlocks, we put up with a lot, and we know that we have to because we live at the beach and we get to go walking to the nice restaurants in downtown in the ocean. But we should have our view. It's just really not fair. And when you look at those pictures and you see these outsized trees that are killing each other, they're now dying, I don't know why they're leaving the biggest ones, you know, there. So if you could do something, we would be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I assume, we'll be talking about that a little bit later.
Good evening. I'm Dennis S. Gerald. And I was with the council maybe about a month ago, in which I raised a question around affordable housing. Before I get into that, I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the city council for the June 19, or Juneteenth event in a couple of days. I think that means a lot to the city. For those people in the council who are against reparation, hopefully they'll show up and realize that it really was a good thing that we did in honoring the Bruce family relative to that. Also, thank the city council for leaving flags up during the protest marches over this past weekend. Again, makes a difference. As divisive the situation is in America, it's important to realize that we are still just one country. But going back to the main point of discussion here, relative to affordable housing, about a month ago, when I was here, and the following day, I sent a letter off to the city council asking they take a look at a place where they could in fact put a tall building without disrupting any of the neighborhoods, and this being in the El Portal section of the city, over by the office buildings, by the elderly apartments, that there was plenty of room, that they could actually build seven, eight, nine stories up without affecting any views in the area. Because the area that I pointed out was actually below grade, significantly below grade, allowing opportunity to put it in. Since that letter went into the city council, it's said a month ago, not a single word has come back. I can write to the President of the United States, our senators, our representatives, our state assembly, our state senators. They all respond to questions when raised. This city council did not, which was disappointing. And again, I think it's part of your responsibility to take what we say, what we write, take it seriously. You can say, no, it doesn't make sense, no, we looked at it and it doesn't work. That's fine. But not responding, I think, is a failure on the part of the city council. And I hope they will again, take a look at it and consider the option that we can in fact build and potentially get the state off our back, saying that we're not committed to affordable housing in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments here in chambers? Public comments? Come on down.
Hello, my name is Laura Kylie, and I've been a resident of Manhattan Beach since 1994. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to applaud the young man's comments who was sitting over here. And I want to say that I echo them, and I'm just here to support those comments because I value our police department, I want to be a safe citizen, and I want everyone in our city to be safe. And I know that it's not part of their job to assist with federal immigration. I would, of course, support the police always to arrest any kind of a criminal, but it's not a criminal act to be undocumented. It's a civil offense. And I know a lot of people are afraid, and I would hope that our police department would have our backs. And if nothing else, if they were called to an event, a happening, a situation where ICE is detaining people, that they would come and be witness and make sure that laws are followed correctly. I have a lot of faith in our Manhattan Beach Police Department, that they would not get involved in immigration, because that's not their duty. But I would like them to bear witness when people, our citizens, call them and are afraid for their safety and the safety of others, to make sure that laws are followed correctly. So thank you for this opportunity, and good for you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any further comments here in chambers? Okay, are there any comments on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. I am going to close public comment. For anyone who's new to our meetings, we don't address any comments that are made about items that aren't on an agenda, because that would be denying the public, everybody, the right to hear the discussion. So there may be follow-up in the future, but for now, for instance, the folks who talked about their trees, that's actually on the agenda coming up. So just so you understand why we may or may not be responding, I think it's important. Okay, so closing public comments. So we're moving on to the consent calendar. And before I ask for a motion to approve minus the items that we're pulling, I'd like to ask the city manager to do the report, your report.
Yes, and thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to make this report earlier in the evening than usual. But I thought the public would be interested, and I'm not sure how late we're going to go tonight. So I am pleased to announce several executive leadership changes at this time. First, I have appointed Libby Brett Hauer as our permanent finance director. She has served as acting finance director since March and has demonstrated exceptional leadership. With over 10 years of progressive advancement in our own finance department, her institutional knowledge and proven ability to manage complex projects makes her uniquely qualified for this role. Second, following an extensive recruitment process, I have appointed Chief Jesse Alexander as our next fire chief. Chief Alexander currently serves as fire chief for Yuba City and begins with the City of Manhattan Beach on July 7. His strong administrative capabilities, collaborative approach, and proven leadership make him the right choice to continue our fire department's exemplary service. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Chief Lang once again for providing continued leadership during this transition. Next, and on the heels of Public Works Director Eric Lee announcing his upcoming retirement, this evening, the city council will consider appointing Ted Simon as interim Public Works Director, effective July 7. Ted recently retired from Redondo Beach, where he served as Public Works Director for nearly 10 years. With over 30 years of public service experience across multiple municipalities, he will provide valuable continuity as we search for a permanent director. Please join me in congratulating these leaders, and thank you.
Great. And following up, since you gave a report on our executive recruitment and hiring, I need to make this sort of legal announcement before we move anything for the consent calendar. So following up on the city manager's announcement about the Public Works Director, the resolution and employment agreement attached to item number 11 on our consent calendar fulfill the CalPERS requirements for the appointment of the interim Public Works Director Ted Simon. In accordance with government code requirements, I'm orally reporting the hourly rate that will be provided in connection with this appointment. Mr. Simon will be paid an hourly rate of $113.25, and he will receive no additional benefits from the city as a retiree. Okay. That script is done. Okay, great. So now I need a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items number eight and 15, correct? Okay, great. And that's been moved. Make sure that's correct, that I got this right. But that's been moved by Councilmember Franklin and seconded by Councilmember Tournay. Motion passes 5-0. Great. Okay, so item number eight, consideration of introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend municipal code chapters 5.01 and 5.04 related to dog licensing. No budget impact. And my dog did not pull this, but Councilmember Franklin did. So do you want to ask the finance director, congratulations, Libby?
Thank you very much.
If you would like to ask her your questions or for a report or whatever it is you want.
Okay. So there's a provision, there's a provision here in order to increase the number of licensed dogs that, that we work with veterinarians and ask them for their database to find the owners who have gotten a rabies vaccination but have not licensed their dog with the city. Am I understanding that correctly?
Sure, I'm happy to clarify this program. So as mentioned in the staff report, this is very common across L.A. County. And so approximately 64 cities currently opt into this program, so we're in the minority by not doing this already. But how it works is veterinarians know that they must send a duplicate copy of any rabies vaccination records to the county, and then the county provides that to us. So and it's for compliance and to ensure that more dogs are licensed, or, excuse me, vaccinated and licensed in the cities.
Okay. So I had asked earlier staff, how many dogs do have licenses? Are you familiar with that number?
1,700 right now is our current number of active licenses. And prior, years ago, we used to have a lot more. I think our numbers have gone down, and so we are hoping to, with some, you know, social media pushes, outreach, we're kind of revamping the program in the next few months. We're working on offering an online renewal system, which will make it a lot easier, faster for people to renew. So we're hoping that will increase compliance as well. So...
And there's one other aspect that is, now it's going to, before we only issued from September to September, but now we can adjust it based upon when the animal was vaccinated?
Correct. Yeah, so this item tonight, the ordinance updates that we're bringing before you, so we...
from September to September, but now we can adjust it based upon when the animal was vaccinated?
Correct, yes, so this item tonight, the ordinance updates that we're bringing before you, so we would be revising our program and moving from a set term of September to September, and making each person's license active for the rabies vaccination period. So that is one of the most common complaint we receive, because, you know, understandably, pet owners worry about maybe overvaccinating their pets, but our current practice would be if your rabies vaccination is not, you know, good for the entire licensing term through September, then we will not issue the license current, right?
Well, I'll tell you why I pulled it, first of all, to get that information out there, but most importantly, I feel very uncomfortable going to licensed professionals, and even though you're dealing with a pet, and there's no HIPAA compliance requirement for our pets, although they're like children to us, but it's disclosing personal information about our residents, primarily without their permission, in terms of their vaccination or non-vaccination, because I assume there would be a matching of the ones who have vaccinated and got a license, and then if they vaccinated but didn't get a license, they would receive a letter from us saying, and to me, that's, you know, I don't know about you all, but I recounted today, we've used the same vet from, we had four cats, four cats, and one dog, all the way from, you know, coming into our family until their ultimate passing there, and you have, people have a unique relationship with their, you know, with their veterinarian, and I just don't think this is helpful in terms of, you know, fostering that relationship, it's important for families to be able to trust them, and if that information's being passed on to the city in order for us to generate more revenue, I understand there's an issue of, you know, the dog license indicates that you got your pet vaccinated, and also for, could serve for, as the dog license says, reunification, but I think we have microchip technology that people have probably been doing, you know, all along here in order to help find their pet. So I just wanted to bring this before my fellow councilmembers, and just to register that objection, and the other part is fine, coordinating it with the, you know, with the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember, for only a little bit longer.
For only a little bit longer. I might address some of those comments in my comments, but for now, just some questions as someone who has dogs and has cats. I just want to better understand the logistics of what this program means for pet owners. I think you've mentioned in passing, it's no longer going to be a September to September. I read in the staff report, it's going to be issuance of a single tag, which won't be replaced each year. It'll mean sending a rabies certification to the city automatically, just maybe summarize, if you could, what this program is proposed to include.
Sure, so there are kind of three different components to the ordinance update, so the first one, maybe we should kind of take them one by one. So the first item A is to update the license renewal period from the fixed period to having it be a rolling period based on the vaccination dates. So that's the first item, and again, that's really to address customer service complaints that we receive, with concerns about overvaccinating their pets, and because sometimes we have people who, you know, just don't want to do it, do that, and so they will opt to take the risk and not license their pet at all, which, again, you know, puts them out of compliance with their municipal code. So that's the first item. The second section is to establish the lifetime dog tag, so that's really more of an efficiency item for us, because we won't be sorting, mailing, you know, paying for the postage every year to mail the tag, so they would be, actually have copies here, so we would have, you know, a lifetime tag, they are, I will say they're better quality than what we're, you know, able to purchase now. So it would be a lifetime tag that's issued to each pet, and, you know, we can always replace them if needed, but this item's, that's really more of an efficiency and cost savings to us.
And then I have one other follow-up question. Did you say there were three components?
Yes, so the final item then is the veterinary reporting program, and again, most cities in LA County are already doing this program, we're in the minority by not doing it, and it's really not, you know, a revenue generation to it, it's for compliance, so you're correct that we would, you know, be getting that data, and then cross-referencing it with our licensed pets' data, and then sending friendly letters to those who aren't licensed to say, hey, we'd like to get you in compliance, please contact us.
The other question I had had to do with the logistics and fiscal impacts of going to this program, because it's dependent upon new software, and you're, just to clarify where we are in that process, we're going out for requests for proposals with different software vendors? What is the timeline on that?
Sure, if you recall, so in the budget that was adopted last week, we did include $20,000 for software. It's, you know, due to the anticipated pricing, we didn't actually need to do a full RFP, so we did a request for quotations, we actually only got one vendor who responded to that, so we are currently in the early stages of working on the contract, and so we're, you know, starting that process, we'll be able to implement it in the next few months, and if you recall from many meetings ago, where we kind of have been talking about with our ERP implementation over the last several years, the licensing module was our last ERP module to implement, we, you know, took business licensing and did an implementation earlier this year to get those renewals online, and so animal licensing was our last component. The urgency is that, you know, we've currently been using the Eden system, which is over 20 years old, it's on its last legs, we need to get off that software, and so that is our urgency now.
Pet owners want to know, is this anticipated to take effect by this September, or perhaps beyond?
That is our goal, so our goal is to, if you adopt these municipal code changes tonight, we have plans already to start outreach, because, you know, we would be communicating to the public about these changes, and then also communicating to our local veterinarians about the programs, and so we'll be, you know, doing social media outreach and lots of outreach.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tarnay.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Libby. I have just a few questions, because you mentioned that our licensing numbers are down, kind of roughly, what were the historic numbers before the percentage that were down?
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I want to say, you know, over, definitely over 2,000 in prior years.
Okay, and then, what's our current outreach for licensing, for reaching out to, I know that a lot of people got pets over COVID and since then as well, but so what's our current process for outreach to the public?
Yeah, honestly, we, you know, we send renewals every year to those who have active licenses, however, we don't do a whole lot of outreach to the general public to notify them that you should have a license, and, you know, to try to draw in those who aren't licensed, or maybe new to the community.
So when the veterinarians report out on the rabies, so we get that information currently, or we do not?
No, we do not, it's a program we would have to opt into, and we would need this language written into our municipal code in order to do so.
In order to do that, okay. And then, can you just explain to us why licensing is important for a city to maintain and require licensing?
Sure, the compliance is important, and perhaps, I don't know, the police department would want to chime in on any, you know, public safety components to it, but I believe it's more of a public safety issue.
I just wanted Chief to walk down, she was looking too comfortable back there.
Why is it true?
Good evening, Mayor Horwath, and members of the city council. With regard to dog licensing, it is a way for us to ensure that dogs are properly vaccinated, especially against the rabies vaccine, because not only can that be harmful to pets, it can be harmful to people, and if you're unaware, the vaccine regimen, if someone is bitten by a rabid animal, is fairly significant and very, very painful, so one of the ways that we can ensure that pets are in compliance is through licensing. I will tell you that the city where I reside participates in this very same program, and, you know, they send me an email, and let me know when my dog's rabies shot is expiring, and actually limited the length of my license, I paid for it, but they won't give it to me until I provide proof of vaccination, because licensing period and the vaccine period didn't quite overlap, and so it's really very important for the health and safety of our pets in the community, that we ensure that they're licensed, and requiring their rabies vaccine and doing this process is one of those ways that we ensure that they're properly vaccinated against communicable diseases among animals.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and then just one last question, because I know we did our budget session and the user fee, what is the annual fee for a dog license now?
For spayed and neutered animals, it's $23 for the year now, for unaltered pets, it's $51, and then we do offer a senior discount as well.
For the dog or for the person?
For the person, but.
Good question. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, I see, Councilmember Franklin?
Yes, how many cases of rabies do we see in a year?
I would not have that information. I don't know if the police department would either.
Either in the pet, or, you know, in case of bites, or anything like that.
Chief?
You just shout it out, Chief.
No, she can't.
More steps.
It has to be.
This is very good. The city is really bad for your standing, it's so much better for your health. Unfortunately, Councilmember Franklin, I don't have stats about how many, how often folks are bitten by rabid animals, but rabies is highly contagious, once an animal does have it, they can pass it along very easily, and the way that they behave when the virus takes over their brain is really abnormal to how they would generally behave, so you have animals who are now kind of seeking out other creatures and people to bite when they normally wouldn't do that, just because of how the disease takes over their brain, and so I understand the question, and how many do we have, but I, quite honestly, one would be too many, because of the damage it could do to not only the pet community, but also human beings.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Shirlene.
Thank you. So Chief, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Yeah, straight down here, though.
Firstly, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
I support this, code changes, I think it's important, I think it's the next step we needed to do for this program, for all the reasons you mentioned in the staff report. I do hear the sensitivity of information potentially being shared, but I feel that we'll keep those safe and not use them for any other reasons for marketing, but yeah, I support the program, just hopefully we can get it up before, soon, and the outreach is going to just hopefully be out the door, because, you know, pets are people's fur babies, so.
We do know that.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tarnay, any more questions before I open up for public comments?
Just a quick one, does licensing also help with like recovery of a lost pet as well? Is that something that if they don't have their license, but they have their permit, their, I mean, they don't have their pet?
I'm glad I stayed down this time, but, so these sort of tags come with the license, and you don't have, you don't have to purchase a new one every year, you get one, and then you can just keep that one, but there's a license number on it, and it does tell you about the owner, so our animal control officers would have the ability to run the number and say this pet belongs to this person, so it does aid in recovery, especially, you know, if we're not able to get the chip scanned or anything like that right away, or they don't have a chip, so it does help us tremendously with recovery.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, oh, sorry, any more questions before I open up to the public? Okay, is there anyone in chambers who would like to opine on, yes, come on down, Stefan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Just, it's interesting, this discussion, I hadn't thought about it much, but if we only have 1,700 out of 2,000 dogs licensed, that's about 85%, so a question comes into play, is like, how do we enforce compliance with this? I mean, I'm dog-sitting my daughter's dog and walk it on a strand daily now until she gets her ACL done repaired completely, and, you know, I've never been asked, you know, and so it'd be interesting, though, are we doing any enforcement on this to make sure that we're getting it, because 85% compliance is probably not good enough, if we talk about one rabies bite is dangerous and at risk. And then secondly, like I said, I've got my daughter's dog, the dog's from Culver City, licensed in Culver City, but we have a lot of people visiting this city, and they may not have licensed dogs as well, so that places another risk. So maybe there's an opportunity here, just maybe to talk about the overall risk that we have around this thing, so appreciate if we could maybe debate and opine on that for a minute. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask a question, please?
Sure.
So you said that there were 1,700 out of 2,000 dogs? Where did we get the number 2,000?
They had said that we.
There was 2,000 licenses in the past.
In the past.
Oh, in the past, okay.
Probably 10,000.
Probably 15 or 10,000 dogs.
But we don't know the number beyond the 2,000.
I wouldn't know the exact number of pets in the city, no, but.
There's 2,000 on my block.
Yeah, it feels that way when you walk around, doesn't it?
Yeah, great. Okay, that was hyperbole, but, okay, any more public comments in chambers? Okay, how about on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, I'll make my comments, I've made a motion to accept this, let's see, so I have a dog, I think our system, just like, like a lot of things right now, I mean, it's very exciting to be on council right now, because I feel like there's, we're buying, you know, new fire trucks, quadruple pumpers, or whatever they are, you know, lots of our enterprise software is being replaced after 20 years of useful life, and, so that's very exciting to me, and it's also very exciting as a dog owner, because it's been a little bit cumbersome and a little bit antiquated, as we know, like, you know, with that, with that rabies vaccination thing, it's very confuddling sometimes, how, when it doesn't line up, and I love not getting a new tag every year, because I don't have to break a nail every time I try to put that thing on. I know the hacks, don't, don't start with me. I do think it's a public safety issue, I do think, it's an interesting question, Stefan, about compliance, I think this will help compliance for a couple of reasons. One, it will be easier to do and renew every year, I mean, it is very, it's kind of cumbersome now. You know, we do have animal control out there, I know, because my husband has broken some codes, and, sorry, Mark, and been warned, they are out there looking for bad behavior, and so when they see bad behavior, then they can check to see if they have the tag, you know, they're not gonna, that's him, not me, by the way, but I think this will also help compliance, because we'll be getting updates from the vets, you know, like, okay, these dogs have been vaccinated, and then perhaps we can do outreach to say, you know, follow the city code and get a dog license, right? So I'm supporting it for all those reasons, and I see there's a second, but I see there's a couple more comments, so the seconder will allow the other comments by our colleagues?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so Councilmember Franklin.
Okay, so I mentioned my concern earlier, but now we have more data. I haven't seen this as a problem in Manhattan Beach, I've asked questions about if it's, is it a problem? Before reading this today in here, I don't think I've given much thought to rabies outbreaks or anything like that in the city. Everything is great about it, except the reporting from the vets. That just to me is very unsettling. A pet owner is all of a sudden going to get a letter, I would presume in the mail, from the city, saying, your pet needs to be vaccinated. How do you find that, you know, how do you find that out? You're putting the vet, whose primary focus has got to be the health of that animal, and trust me, they are probably talking to those people all the time, coming in, you're in their database, people are getting their rabies, you know, their rabies vaccinations in Manhattan Beach. I think it's overreached by the city, I think that we can find other ways of encouraging people to license their animals. If somehow we knew the number, I would venture to guess that in terms of identification, that animal microchipping, I would say an animal doesn't leave a vet without microchipping, because of that one-on-one relationship with the vet, here's the best thing you can do for your, for your animal, get a rabies vaccination, and get a microchipped. I'm sorry if people aren't complying with our rules, maybe people just aren't aware of them, but I think there's other ways that we can get the information without actually having, you know, to go to the, you know, to go to the vets, and to say, give us the database of non-compliant, you know, patients of yours.
Can I, Joe, can I ask you?
Non-compliant vis a vis the city's.
It's a licensing, we're not forcing them to get vaccinated, we're saying. It's the licensing. We're not forcing them to get vaccinated. We're saying if you've gotten your dog, I mean, you're supposed to have a license. So we're not saying.
That's the city's job. It's not the vet's job.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, council, were you done with your comments?
No, no, not yet.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
There's so much interference. There's so much people are worried about their data and things like that, that I just think this is overreach. I think we can, we should depend on people to do the right thing. I imagine if we knew the numbers, there probably are a lot of people, like I mentioned earlier, that do have the rabies, rabies, why am I saying rabies, rabies vaccination for their pets. So I don't know if we need $20,000 just for that part. I think we need $20,000 for the aligning of the license. That's a great idea. But just the, the overreach data, all of a sudden, you're going to be getting a letter, you know, and that can, you know, that can impact in a negative notion, in a negative way, your relationship with your veterinarian professional.
Okay, thank you.
For that reason, I won't, well, if.
Are you supporting it? I can't tell.
Well, I, I am, but I would, I would entertain a friendly mo, you know, a friendly amendment, you know, to take out the database from the vet.
As maker of the motion, I'm, I'm, I'm in a nice way declining the friendly amendment.
Okay.
Councilmember Tarnay?
I think after listening, the reasons as to why this is important, it's, I think, not only is it a public safety issue, I think being able to return our pets quickly if they're, they're registered, that's another reason. And I do think outreach takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of resources. So if we are thinking about not expending a lot of money on this, the outreach for this, it would be great if they get the information. I think I've had pets. I know a lot of my neighbors have pets. I, I don't see it as an overreach. I don't think, I think it's a privacy issue. It's, it's a registration if you have a pet. I think most people know when you're walking your dog that you have a pet. So for that reason, I don't think it's a privacy issue. And then also the other thing is, it's, it helps with recovery of user fee. I mean, having a pet, I mean, you've walked the strand. I walked by Sand Dune Park.
Great point.
There's a ton of, of, you know, excrement that doesn't get picked up, that doesn't get cleaned up. The city has to maintain. So I think that's also a part of, you know, the importance of charging a fee for a license and making sure that everyone pays their fair share. It shouldn't be just the people who are proactive pet owners, but on all of us who have pets. And the best way and the easiest way, the most efficient way to do this is to, to get it through the veterinarians. People want to take care of their pets. I think we should make it easy for them to, to have the license and make it easy for them to get.
Could I ask another technical question? What, what if a vet doesn't agree? You know, they say, no, those are, those are my patient records. They're private.
Yeah, we'd have to look into that. But again, our, you know, we've received verification that 64 other cities currently already do this program in LA County. So it sounds like-
64 of 88, yeah.
Yeah, of 88 cities, plus the LA County unincorporated areas, report this data to the LA County Public Health Agency. So we would have to look into what would happen if a certain veterinarian decided that they didn't want to.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'm going to call for the question. You know, I grew up in a very different place in the country. I know people who had to get rabies vaccinations. I've seen rabid dogs. And, you know, we've had the coyote explosion, like, this is, yeah.
So Mayor, before I vote, I'll read the title. Ordinance number 25-0006. An ordinance of the City of Manhattan Beach, amending Manhattan Beach Municipal Code Chapters 5.01, Animals Pound Dogs, and 5.04, Licensing of Dogs of Title V to Revise the City's Dog License Requirements and Make Other Minor Changes.
Okay, thank you. Call for the question. That was a rough discussion. Just kidding.
Motion passes four to one.
That was a pun. Okay, thank you. Yeah, get your water. All right. So now, item number 15 was the consideration of the resolution approving a three-year maintenance services agreement with West Coast Arborists for Tree Management Services in an amount not to exceed $3,102,425. And Councilmember Shreelain.
Thank you, Mayor. So, good evening. So I just, it's a big ticket item, over $3 million. I have a couple of questions and maybe a clarification. It reads as a three-year in the title, but the amount that you have in the title is for five years. Further down in the staff report, it talks about a three-year with two one-year options. We typically don't include the option years upfront because they're just that option. So I guess I want clarification on that. And then, thirdly, we talked about, this wasn't the lowest bid. You explained it in the staff report, but I think it's important for our residents and taxpayers to hear $3 million contract, why, why we did not take the lowest bid. So those are the three questions.
And tonight, we have our urban forester, Urban Area, to answer your questions regarding the tree management services agreement.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to answer any questions related to the tree management services contract. Could you repeat question number one, please?
I will. I will, I will, most definitely. In the title, it says three-year maintenance agreement. The $3.1 million is for five years. Later on in the report, it talks about a three-year plus two one-year options. Typically, the options are not included in the overall dollar value. And thirdly, explain to us our, our residents and taxpayers why we didn't go with the lowest bid, which would have saved almost $500,000 over the life of the contract, if we're looking at five years. So.
It, it is a three-year contract with two one-year options, first of all. That, that's, you know, that is what's in the contract. As far as not going with the lower, the lowest bid, we went through a process of evaluating each contractor. And with the staff, I believe there were about seven of those on, on a board. West Coast Arborists came in with a higher quality of staff, if you will. One of the requirements of, of the staff that the contractor was to supply was to have certified arborists on, on site while the crew was working. The low bid did not provide that, that certified arborist. Secondly, they were going to have to outsource a lot of, they had to outsource all of their tree data inventory collection. So they weren't going to be inclusive. That was not going to be in, in-house service. So we were thinking, well, that's going to have to be a contract, an additional contract, which would be another cost associated with, outside of the contract, outside of the scope of work.
Okay. I guess maybe it's a question for the city manager. Maybe you can direct me, who could answer this question? But why is the full five years in the, in the report versus the three-year maintenance agreement, the two-year options, those typically would come back to, to council? Or maybe they should be included into the title as, as five years instead of three?
Yeah, I should address that. It's really for transparency with the two options. I was starting to do the math of 570 times three, just in case the city exercises those options. It's alerting the public now that this could be the entire amount. So it's a transparency issue.
Okay.
In other words, they won't have to come, staff will not have to come back in the fourth year and say, we'd like to extend it, and it's going to be another $570,000.
Got you. And I, I get the transparency, but if we're being transparent, then the $3 million, $3.1 million is for five years, and that should have been reflected into the title.
You're correct. And that's.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
Yes.
No further questions?
You might want to stay there because Mayor Protem Lesser.
Great. Ernest, thank you for your response to me in advance of this meeting. Questions I extended, or I asked about was distinguishing what's included in this agreement and what's not. You indicated that there's a separate agreement for landscape services, and this is just tree care. Can you just clarify what's included and what's not?
Okay, what's included in the tree management services contract is tree pruning, tree removal services, tree planting services, fertilization for palm trees in the north bid and downtown bid, as well as, let's see what else. Oh, we built in a contingency for, for instance, we often have to do extra work for engineering. So there's contingency built in for that, for any additional work that might be outside of the scope of the contract. And it's strictly tree care services.
So to that end, and because this is on the agenda tonight in response to comments that were raised earlier tonight, my recollection is there have been issues with trees on the Veterans Parkway on the block that the residents discussed this evening, in particular whether it's ANSI, I believe that's the abbreviation, standards were followed in trimming those trees. That was an issue 10, 15 years ago. But can you explain or respond to the questions that the residents were making about the height that the tree was cut to? What is the practice when a nest is discovered? How quickly will they come back? Is there an obligation to come back? And more particularly, what standards are they using if they're only coming every three years or more?
Absolutely. We, we abide by ANSI standards, which are American National Institute, Institute. That, those are embedded into our ordinances as well as this contract, and they are our specifications. ANSI, ANSI standards dictate that no more than 25% of a tree shall be removed in a growing season. Not, so, for instance, these trees can grow about two feet a year. 25% of two feet is six inches. That's why we remove six inches. It's not 25% of the tree. It's 25% of the growth, leaf material generated in a growing season. That's the number, if you will.
But let me then clarify what their concern might be. And just objectively, if a tree cycle for pruning is every three years, and then you miss a year more, that means, presuming the tree is healthy, it'll continue to grow. And thus, the amount that would be trimmed would be less than if there was a regular maintenance schedule, would it not?
Yes, it would be, but we wouldn't multiply those three years and, and bring it down 25%. I understand what they, they, they would like to do. Now, going forward, you know, with this contract, we've embedded an annual schedule into the Veterans Parkway for pruning. So going forward, they'll see us every year on Ardmore and on the Veterans Parkway.
So that would result in perhaps six inches a year rather than six inches every three years?
Correct.
Okay. So, but do we have to only use the ANSI standards? Could we, could we say, sorry, did I, someone else, Councilmember Franklin, I'm sorry. I didn't see.
No, 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 you were asking a question.
Ah, okay. So could we say, I know what the ANSI standards are, but can we go above that? If we, I mean, when I look at the pictures, I'm, you know, with apologies to Stephanie and Laura, we don't have a view ordinance, and I'm not fighting for their view. But I am looking at these trees that look like they could use some more trimming. So is it not possible for us to go above those standards?
Well, the problem when you go above those standards here, you're going to go above those standards elsewhere. For instance, we have some people on the opposite side of Bruce's Beach that would like to trim our trees at 50% to achieve a view. So, you know, anything is possible. And, and I'm not saying we're not, we can't do that. But you're also getting into an area where you're topping a tree, which is against our city ordinance as well. So.
I have a follow-up question. I'm sorry. And then, just to follow up on the earlier question and the questions of the mayor, we're not just looking at one group of trees. We, as a council, are looking at a larger policy. What is the approach that residents should follow and can follow to request the city to evaluate trees that are growing on public property that are in one way or another either obstructing their property or they have concerns about?
Well, if they're obstructing their, their property, we definitely will address the issue as far as, you know, maintaining the value of that property. If a tree's damaging a property, whether it's below ground or above ground, that's something we'd take a real serious look at. If, you know, removal is an option or replacing, that, that is a, that would be a consideration as well.
Council, yeah, okay, we'll keep going. Councilmember Franklin?
Great, thank you. So does this only apply to the height? Is there any thinning that, that's done?
Absolutely. There's always, you know, there's, people overuse thinning. So yes, there is, you know, we're talking about limbs that are dead, dying, crossed over. But typically, a good, a tree that's well-maintained, well-trimmed, you're really not, you're really not going to notice it. Unfortunately, the industry is what it is now, and you see a lot of people, instead of removing 25% in a growing season, you're seeing 90% of foliage being removed in a lot of cases. But that's, that's an industry issue.
Okay. And so I did go take a look at those trees. It seems like they're pretty close together. You know, the trunks are pretty close together, and they're interweaving, you know, with each other, which then increases the density, which might impact the view. Is, that's something that gets addressed? I mean, because they're, they're what? Would you say they're approximately 30 years old, or?
I would say 25, 30 years old, yes. And, and, you know, thinning is an option. You know, they are, they are intertwined. They are weaved together, if you will. And that is an option. But you also, you know, so thinning to somebody else might be excessive tree removal to another party. And, and that's the area we get into at this location.
It's true. We have had, yeah.
So.
Okay.
So Mayor, just since we're talking about the contract tonight.
I, I understand.
This might be something that the council may want to bring up at the end of the meeting.
Got you.
And get a further report on this.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin, do you have any more questions?
I'll finish.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll, we'll take some public comment if we, okay?
Thank you.
Now, the, the folks who spoke, I don't even think they're still here now, but they had their butt at the apple, so to speak. Is there anybody else in chambers who would like to speak to this issue? How about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. So as our city attorney reminded us, this is about the contract, but do I have, is there a motion or any other? Councilmember Franklin, what would your motion be?
To accept adopt Resolution Number 25-0038 and a reading, three-year maintenance services agreement with the West Coast Arborists for Tree Management Services in an amount not to exceed $3,102,425.
Okay. And that's been seconded by Councilmember Tarnay. No further comments? Okay, call for the question.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. All right, moving on to public hearings. The first one, item number 20, conduct public hearing and consider a resolution providing for the annual levy, levy and collection streetlighting landscaping district maintenance assessments for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Finance Director, we can cross that acting out. Bret Hauer.
Right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Again, my name's Libby Bret Hauer, your new finance director. Pardon me, grabbing my notes here. So on tonight's agenda is a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 2583, providing for the annual levy and collection of street lighting and landscape district maintenance assessments for fiscal year 2526. So this process began, began back in April, on April 1st, when you approved Resolution Number 2531. That was adopted to order the engineer's report, including the plan, specifications, and cost estimates for the annual assessment in fiscal year 26. So this was followed by the adoption of two other resolutions on May 20th, which were Resolution 2544, which approved the assessment engineer's report, and Resolution 2545, which declared the City Council's intention to provide for the annual levy and collection of assessments and setting the public hearing for tonight. So with approval of the Resolution 2583, assessments will continue to be levied in the new fiscal year beginning July 1st. Assessments are based solely on land use and have not changed since 1996, which results in a projected budget deficit in the street lighting fund of about $284,000 for next fiscal year. Any increase in assessments would require a proposition to a team process. So notification of tonight's hearing was advertised in the Beach Reporter. And tonight's public hearing is the last City Council action before the assessments are submitted to the county for inclusion on property tax bills. This concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lesser?
So Libby, can you just confirm? You just stated it, but it's not expressly stated in this staff report, although it's been in many prior ones. The last time this rate was adjusted was in what year?
1990- 1996.
Okay. So to the extent that the council would even entertain an increase, or suggest or explore an increase, it would have to follow proposition 218. But there's different processes with proposition 218, either by mail protests or at the ballot box. And I had asked staff in advance, which process would we need to follow for this adjustment for the first time in almost 30 years?
Okay, well, I believe we could follow a similar process to the storm drain assessment measure that was done in, well, we started it in 2023, and voters, or the ballot measure process was done, I believe, in early 2024.
So I'm sorry, at an election ballot, or by US mail, or in-person lodging protests? What would be the process?
That was, I believe, a mail-in protest ballot.
A mail-in protest ballot, maybe similar, be similar. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chirillian?
Thank you. Hey, Libby. So the deficit of 284, I guess, what's driving the expenditures up? Because the deficit seems to be climbing. I know the assessment has stayed the same. What's driving the expenditures?
Sure. The majority of the costs in the street lighting fund are electricity, over $300,000 there. The gas service is about $150,000 per year, and that's for the, the gas lamp section, which those are costly because they're on constantly, I believe. And then there's also street sweeping and pressure washing included in contract services in the fund as well, which is about $100,000 there.
Have we, I mean, we've scrubbed the, I mean, obviously, utility portion, we can't scrub, and we've taken a look at that, all the line items to see if we can minimize the deficit, and we've already done that.
Certainly. In our, our budget process, we talked about how we were looking for efficiencies in all areas, including this fund as well.
Thank you.
But this, oh, go ahead.
Since it was a reply to you, what was the gas charge?
For gas lamp district.
Yeah, the, the gas lamp district, we, our projection for the cost for that next year is just over $150,000.
$150,000.
But, and if you talk about the difference, 1996 is 29 years ago.
Correct.
So, the, like, I think our, our electric rates have gone up, gas rates have probably gone up, like, all of it, I mean, it's not, it's really increased, and we haven't, you know, kept up, not even close.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions before I open up the public hearing? I'll open, and we can have more questions after if we need to, or comments. Yeah, so opening up the public hearing.
Me again, Stefan. You know, just as a resident, my question would be, when I get this, is, okay, this is the second one that's kind of a surprise. Do we have any more? So I would encourage us to take a look at what are the other things that we have out there that have not been adjusted in the last 20, 30 years, get an inventory of those, and look at those before we have a surprise. I think the proposal makes sense, some over 29 years. I'm sure the rate increases are, you know, right in the line with what all our cost increases have been.
Great point. We are sort of, well, sorry, I'll make comments later, sorry. Any more public comments? Okay, Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. I'm so sorry that I almost jumped in there to, yeah, it is, it's kind of remarkable when you think about 29 years. So, we've, I'm closing the public hearing, and Councilmember Lesser?
I had a follow-up question with regard to a general benefit versus a specific benefit, and how those are treated differently, because I think there has been some question as it relates to the area of our downtown, for example, should that newer, be paid for more by a private property owner versus the public. What is the analysis there?
Well, that's, the purpose of the engineer's report is to look at each parcel and derive the benefit there based on each parcel's unique property.
So the conclusion for this proposed assessment, using the values from 29 years ago, is because it is of a general benefit, that's the conclusion of the consultant?
Could you restate that question more time?
Confirm then the standard that's being used to support this assessment.
But per parcel, so it's looking at each property's.
But there's, but, so we're all individual parcel owners are paying this assessment, but there's a general, it's considered a general benefit to have electricity light downtown, you know, all of that.
In the district.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Because I would consider a motion to adopt resolution number 25-0083, which has been moved by Councilmember Ternay, which is providing for annual levy and collection of fiscal year 2025, 2026 maintenance assessments. It's been seconded by Councilmember Chirillian. And, and before I call for the question, I thought it was an interesting point about, that a resident made about, are there any of the others? We are rightsizing some of these fees, and I, and I appreciate your question because you're also saying you support this, I mean, you can understand it, but, you know, hopefully, we'll, you know, maybe we could hear back on that a little later, all, any other fees or assessments that are out there. So with that, I would call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Would my colleagues like to take a five, seven, eight-minute break now before we dive into the City Park's master plan? Because I feel like, yeah, I feel like that's going to be a nice, long, good. Well, it's a master plan, so, okay, so we're going to take a 10-minute break, we'll be back. Thank you. Some, you know, master plan.
Oh.
All right, we've got all the charts taken our sleeves. Getting ready to hear all about our parks. Master plan for them.
Vegas, can we go live?
Okay, we.
Am I? Let's see, it's not, there we go. Oh, there's the red, okay. We are live, everybody, welcome back, thank you for that little break. Director Lehman, item number twenty-one, right?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. Melissa McCollum, our Senior Recreation Manager, will be presenting this item. And I did want to take a moment to thank her for her leadership on this project, which was an immense project, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission, in particular, the Ad-Hoc Committee, led by Commissioner Tracy Wines, Ro Schreiner, and also Karen Komatinsky. For all your work, and with that, I will turn it over to Melissa McCollum.
Okey-dokey, excellent.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to present our recommended updates for the Parks Master Plan. Last approved by City Council in 2020, the Parks Master Plan serves as a guide to help enhance our Parks and Recreation Facilities, as well as prioritize capital improvement projects and funding allocations. It was intended to be reviewed and updated regularly. Our goal today is to approve the Parks Master Plan update as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission, or to receive direction regarding Parks Master Plan changes that the City Council as a whole would like to see. Several common themes that emerged from community outreach efforts serve as the basis for the project recommendations identified in the Parks Master Plan. Those common themes include increase and optimize access to open space, create a sense of community, optimize existing park and beach experiences, and enhance play for all. Projects in the Parks Master Plan are also placed into three categories based on cost, complexity, and resources. The categories include quick wins, so projects costing less than $60,000; mid-range, projects with budgets between $60,000 and $1 million; and long-term vision, projects with budgets over $1 million, and the need for significant staff resources. Completed Parks Master Plan projects since 2020 are listed on this slide, and we do have lots to celebrate. Projects completed since 2020 include the lower polywog playground replacement, the Marine Field turf replacement, Beg Field renovations, tons of new public art, including murals, utility boxes and sculptures, and most recently, that shark mural, the Sand Dune Park enhanced nature areas, and the expanded Polywog Park dog run. Additional progress since 2020 includes the new MBMS pickleball courts, the Strand Park course replacement, the Polywog Fitness Court upgrade, Polywog Story Walk installation, the new ceramic studio kiln, the Rocket Ship Hall HVAC upgrade, Beg Pool modernization study, the Public Art Collection survey, and the Jocelyn Center crosswalk improvement. Mid-range projects from the Parks Master Plan that have not been completed yet are listed on this next slide. Those include updating the beach cottage in Polywog Park, completing Beg Pool priority repairs. And the top three have been identified as plumbing, deck surfacing, and fencing. Installing pour-in-place playground surfacing, priorities are the upper Polywog and Marine Avenue Park playgrounds, upgrading the Veterans Parkway Mariposa Fitness Equipment, and increasing public art, which is an annual effort. The remaining long-term projects from the Park Master Plan include implementing the Sand Dune Master Plan, repurposing the land occupied by the Pay 'N Play facility at Marine, building a new community aquatics facility, renovating or replacing the Jocelyn Community Center. And remaining long-term projects are on this slide, so you can see that it is a long, long, quite expensive list. But those additional projects include renovating and replacing Manhattan Heights Community Center, renovating the public spaces at Live Oak Park to maximize usage, and explore acquiring the armory land for use as open space, recreational amenities, and parking. And just as a reminder, that armory land is not currently available, but the city does reach out periodically to express interest if it would ever become available. So the next section is especially important as it identifies new projects recommended to be added to the Parks Master Plan. So under quick wins, enhanced dog runs, and that's particularly at the Marine Avenue Park as part of the Pay 'N Play repurposing project. Also repurposing the area by Live Oak Park basketball courts, currently occupied by a storage trailer. And a quick reminder about the difference that it made at Polywog Park when the storage trailers were removed from the Beg parking lot and the dog run was able to be expanded. There's also a new feeling of expansiveness as you go into the park. So hopefully, similar improvement could be made at Live Oak. And thanks to Public Works, adding direct access to Court Six at the Live Oak Park tennis courts can be moved from a mid-range project to a quick win. It's noted as a mid-range on your slide, it is noted as a quick win in the draft Parks Master Plan that was in your staff report. But they found a way to add potentially a direct gate on the west side of the fence, rather than having to do a larger project. This was an issue that was brought to our attention recently by Councilmember Sherillian. And if you're not aware, basically, the only access to Court Six right now is through that sliver that you see on the slide, where you do have to walk through Court Five either as you enter or exit the court. So it will be an improvement for our players.
That's great.
Melissa, can I ask a quick question, since we're going through these?
Sure.
Is the west side on the baseball entrance, or is it off the basketball?
It is off basketball.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you could enter it from the tennis office or the basketball court.
Beautiful.
And the first mid-range project then added as a recommendation for the Parks Master Plan is updating the Marine Avenue Field fencing. You probably recall, a new turf was installed, but the fence does need upgrades as well. Other mid-range projects on the recommended update to the Park Master Plan include renovating select Manhattan Heights restrooms, installing artificial turf, and updating the rock wall. The rock wall at Manhattan Heights has actually been there since the 90s, which is amazing, but it can no longer be repaired, so a replacement is needed. Also replacing Manhattan Village Field synthetic turf and updating the lighting, as well as upgrading the lighting embalished at Maricosta High School tennis courts. So new long-term vision projects include build a senior and scout community center. This project was actually not in the Parks Master Plan that was adopted in 2020, so we think it should be documented. Also renovating and replacing the Manhattan Beach Arts Center, exploring a cultural library concept with LA County Library, and exploring acquiring Adventure Plex. And another reminder that that Adventure Plex is not currently available, it is owned by Beach City Health District. But it is something that the Ad-Hoc Committee from the Parks and Rec Commission and staff do you think could potentially add a lot of value on the east side for expanding city recreation capabilities because of the indoor gym, because of the parking, because of the classroom accessibility, as well as the proximity to the Marine Sports Complex and the Marine Avenue Park. So again, just property that we want to keep an eye on if anything ever changes with it.
They haven't indicated, though, that they're.
Not, just because of all of the proposals in Redondo Beach, at one point, there seemed to be some possibility, but because of the funding and kind of rethinking that plan, it may or may not become available in the future. Yep. So several projects identified in the Parks Master Plan adopted in 2020 were removed from the update, although project summaries for all of them are captured in an appendix in case they want to be revived at a later or future date. So removed projects include Create El Porto Family Park. And City Council did direct staff to explore the possibility of LA County funding this project, as LA County owns the triangular lot east of the bike path on the northwest part of town. But when LA County declined to provide that project funding, the El Porto Family Park was removed from the work plan. Creating a community garden near Beg Field, this project was removed as the land is owned by the Manhattan Beach Unified School District, and the site is very complex, it's sloped with no irrigation, no ADA access. It's also a very busy area, but, so the Ad-Hoc Committee did think that it was not a high priority compared to other needs. And expand additional areas for four-legged friends. The Parks and Rec Commission has done a very thorough investigation, both current and former commissioners, and it was determined that there are no viable options for additional dog parks in the Manhattan Beach at this time. And the focus really should be on improving the current dog runs.
So even if they're vaccinated and licensed.
That's a whole nother issue.
Well, since four-legged friends, so what about my cats?
Doesn't your cat have four legs?
It's got nine lives.
Nine lives, four legs, whatever.
He had three-legged friends, I guess some dogs have three, right, that's true. So removed mid-range projects do include renting vacant spaces for downtown pop-up art galleries. Although an innovative idea, the Parks and Rec Commission did determine that there are plenty of options for public art in other locations within Manhattan Beach that do not require renting space. Adding solar lights on the beach volleyball court south of the pier, City Council did direct staff to remove this item from the work plan in 2023. Incorporate skatable art throughout the parks. Parks and Recreation Commission determined that it's not a high priority compared to other public art and recreation projects. Removed long-term projects, including add Polywog Park stage and pavilion. City Council did remove this item from the capital improvement program, five-year plan. And consider acquiring the small lot at 26th Street and Bella Avenue. Parks and Rec Commission determined that it's not a high priority compared to other projects, and prefers to focus on updating current facilities rather than expanding facilities, with the possible exception of the Armory and Adventure Plex if they become available. So with considerable infrastructure and deferred park maintenance needs identified in Manhattan Beach, the city does need to be creative in terms of finding funding sources for moving priority Parks and Recreation projects forward to meet community expectations. As demonstrated in the 2025 budget survey, as well as other recent assessments, there is strong community support for improving Parks and Recreation Facilities, including community centers, playgrounds, and Beg Pool, even when compared to other potential uses of operating in capital budgets. As noted in the staff report, Making Parks Better was ranked as the third highest priority after Keeping Our City Safe and Fixing Roads in the recent budget survey. And Improving Parks and Recreation Facilities was ranked as one of the highest priorities when survey respondents were asked what places the city should improve first. So potential funding options are listed on this slide. They could be applied to particular projects or as part of new financial policies adopted by the city. I am happy to go into more detail about any of them, but I will note that the Finance Department will return to City Council after fiscal year end with a report about the surplus as well as options for those funds. And finally, several of the priority Parks Master Plan projects are reflected in the CIP plan for fiscal year 2026 to 2030. Parks Master Plan projects, at least partially funded, include Sand Dune Park improvements, Pay 'N Play repurposing, Beg Pool upgrades, Manhattan Village aquatics exploration, Marine soccer field fencing replacement, Manhattan Village field lighting replacement, Veterans Parkway fitness equipment replacement, Manhattan Heights improvements, and the new Senior and Scout Community Center. These projects reflect $2 million in newly approved CIP funding for fiscal year 2026, about 33% of the fiscal year 2026 CIP total. And additional maintenance funding is programmed into the plan, including for select playgrounds, sports court, fencing, and lighting upgrades, that equates to about an additional $193,000 for fiscal year 2026. So staff does recommend approval of the Parks Master Plan update as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission to help enhance our Parks and Recreation Facilities, as well as prioritize capital improvement projects and funding allocations. Director Lehman and I are available for questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, I think that was an excellent report. And so if we have questions, and I have, I'm gonna have some questions. First of all, I also want to say, the murals around town just look great. And I've had, I was telling my colleagues, one of my neighbors who never says anything about, anything about the city, like, came up to me to say how great they were, and the shark mural, the shark mural, my friend? I think it's awesome. So I had a question, if you go, I think it was Slide Seven, okay? And it was the Little Red House. You know, this is something that I pers, well, let me phrase it as a question. Updating the beach cottage in Polywog Park, what does that mean?
Sure, so we have been working with the Manhattan Beach Historical Society, as well as Public Works, and there has been progress on roof repairs. And that is really the first project that needs to be done, because after that is finished, there will be some interior repairs and upgrades as well. For instance, painting and new plans for exhibit space. The idea would be to do, to work with cultural arts and do more regular rotations of the exhibits within the interior. So there's lighting, furniture, painting, am I forgetting anything in that project?
Floors, are they good?
But the real, I think, the real point is that it's not an expansion, it's not a new building, it is just repairing what is currently there to make it more usable, and so people can access the records and the displays more easily.
Is there a plan in this to take the old restroom facility that's currently a storage place? I'm looking at Director.
Yeah, not at this time.
Okay.
And I think we're waiting for the library needs assessment. I think once we have that data and it's presented to council, then we can look at potential options having a safe, dry space for storage of materials, potentially.
Right, because that is one of the things, all right, thank you. The last, so on that topic, the cultural library, can you explain what that means?
Sure, so the Library Commission has made recommendation to think about the idea of a cultural library. So it could be a facility on the east side of town that would provide library services, but it could potentially also have arts programming, art exhibits. It could be a place to make those historical records even more accessible. We have a project going with the LA County Library to digitize the city's historical collection, again, in partnership with the Historical Society, so provide greater access to those records. And I think another key point about this exploration is there is library surplus money, which is mentioned on that funding option slide, over $12 million. And again, just a reminder, the community, that's because the community pays more in property taxes than they receive in library services at this time. So that surplus has been collected for years, it is over $12 million at this time, constantly growing. But that should be used for library services. But that can, it's being used to pay for the library needs assessment, it could potentially be used for a facility of this kind if the needs assessment determines that that is what this community wants.
Right, in other words, the library, the county library agreed that a historical collection, you know, historical archives, that would qualify to be some sort of cultural type of library, so.
They've been a great partner.
They've been a, they've been a good partner in that.
And, yes, our support of that concept.
Talking about a new building here, anything like that, but it's just, you know, we're assessing those needs, so thank you for that. I gotta now get out of my.
I should mention, just because Library Commission's also interested in exploring, you know, other ideas, as well as part of this assessment, so maker space, and so everything will be out there as an option, and then we'll come back with real data after the focus groups and the surveys and analysis.
Thank you, okay, Councilmember Sherillian.
Thank you, Melissa, great job on a tough topic, a lot of moving parts. I'm in your Mark Park Master Plan under Parks and Amenities, where it states we have eleven parks. I'm merely looking at, has on here, Polywog Park was created in 1973, and that's aging as well. Now, my concern is, and it might not be part of this, but it's more of a maintenance question having to do with all the droppings all over around the lake, so what can be done about that? Because it's such a beautiful park when you're in, working out or doing something, but once you get close to anywhere near the water, it just gets really tricky. Like I said, it might be a maintenance question, but.
Sure, so Public Works and our Parks and Recreation Department have kind of partnered on trying to tackle this issue. I know they've had a community meeting recently. I don't know who would be the best person to speak about the plan would be at this time.
Public Works will be bringing that back as a council agenda item to talk about, number one, the recommendations from the biologist, but then also the comments from the public at the community meeting, which was well-attended, so that the council can make a decision on how to move forward.
Oh, great, do we know when that is gonna come back?
I don't know at this time, but I will find out.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Melissa, that's it for now.
Thank you, Mayor Pertem.
I'd like to use this discussion for an update, to the extent you're able to provide it. You may not be able to provide a comprehensive update, but I am asked on a regular basis, I think my colleagues are as well, about the pool. Where are we with regard to exploration of either an upgraded Beg Pool, potentially some sort of agreement with the Bay Club on use of a shared pool, and any other exploration of a community pool, given the age of our existing community pool?
I think Gil might be able to address the questions about Beg Pool rehab, but in terms of the interaction with Bay Club for a greater aquatic facility, those discussions are ongoing, and we hope to be at the council by late summer, early fall to talk about what we've learned so far through the exploration process, to present that to the council, and to get direction on whether or not we should move forward with the potential of an aquatics facility with Bay Club. And Gil, do you have anything to add on the matter of the plumbing issues at the Beg Pool that we are looking to address?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Acting City Engineer Gil Gannaboa. Just update on the Beg Pool upgrade, so the three priorities are the plumbing, first and foremost, and then the pool deck, the concrete collar around the pool, and then also the perimeter fencing around the pool there. We've been meeting with the school district to kind of go back and forth between who can take a lead on terms of, who can take a lead in terms of actually carrying out the. take a lead on terms of, who can take a lead in terms of actually carrying out the project. Because the properties on school district, it triggers accessibility requirements with the DSA.
Department of State Architecture.
Department of State Architecture, correct. So we're working with the school district to figure out who's going to take the lead on that end of it, but we do have funding for it.
Thank you. Another question I'm asked about quite a lot, and I'll share that I do have an interest in it, just as a volunteer, and that is the status of the Scout House and Senior Center in terms of when that might come back to council for at least an update. You wanted to get some steps in as well, right?
So again, the status with the Scout House, it's with the Friends Group right now. They're going through some checks and balances with the Health Department, and then we're going to, the Public Works Department is waiting 100% package back, and we'll do a peer review, we'll get it through plan check. So hopefully by the end of 2025, we can have it through plan check on that end of it. And then we can, then we're going to revisit the cost estimate, bring that back to council and have a discussion then.
Okay. Council?
Yes.
Is it, I mean, is there a budget? I mean, are we, the plans that were submitted, is that funded, you know, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, I don't know, that'd probably be a finance question, but that's one reason we're coming back to council with a revised cost estimate on the 100% plans that we received.
Councilmember Franklin, just to add to that, the exercise that we're undergoing right now that is in the Friends' hands is one of value engineering. So after the plans were prepared, we costed that, the price came in very high, above what the council had originally allotted. We sent it back to the Friends and said, let's take a look at some value engineering opportunities so that we can recost it, and then we'd have to come back, as Gil mentioned, to the council with that new price.
Okay. Finally, I just wanted to go back to what might be an idea for an East Manhattan Beach library facility and better talk about that process. We were fortunate tonight earlier to have our library manager provide an update on the needs assessment meetings that the library, County Library is helping, is underwriting, so that we can identify what our interests are in our community, because as you've indicated, we have this surplus which is growing at a large rate, must be dedicated to either library services or a library facility. So how is that captured in this master plan in terms of it really still being open as to how those funds might be used for a combined County Library, City of Manhattan Beach facility?
So there are a couple of projects that might relate, you know, Explore the Cultural Library Facility is called out as a project, but so is Updating the Manhattan Beach Art Center. If, for instance, that was a location that the community ends up being interested in looking at for a facility of this type, and there was a way to combine, you know, the programming that happens at the art center, including the exhibits, but also the arts education, the Glaze Lab, with a facility, maybe a potentially a multi-level facility that would also include library services and other programming opportunities, that's how I think it could be captured within the Parks Master Plan. It's just such early stages, it's hard to kind of tell where it's going to go, because I believe the needs assessment so far, they've started stakeholder interviews as the library manager Murray was speaking about, with council, with Library Commission, with Library County executives, with staff, and now it's time to move to the community. So the focus groups will be with the seniors, with the teens, with the general users of the library, as well as just general residents, to get all of that information, a really, you know, robust survey in July, and then, once we have all that information, the county and the city will be able to move forward.
Helpful. And one of the reasons why we have such a large surplus, I thought it's beyond just the assessed value in Manhattan Beach, beyond the fact that we were able to borrow to get our library built, but also because the funding structure was set when there used to be two libraries in the City of Manhattan Beach, isn't that right?
So I'm not certain that that is accurate, because, for instance, Malibu and Hermosa also have library surpluses, just because the properties are so, are valued so highly. So, yes, I don't think it's tied exactly to having the two facilities, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Sherrillian.
Quick question, and it was brought up already with Mayor Protem and Councilmember Franklin, for the Scout House, and I think our city manager mentioned it. I just want clarification, maybe from the city manager, is it coming back before December? Like, an initial, like, to talk about potentially what it would be, or are we going to wait six months to get that number? Just seems like far away.
It just depends on, number one, when we get it back into our hands, and then how long it takes us to do the review of the 100% plans and get that costing. I hope that it will be before December, but part of it is a back and forth with the Friends, so we can only control our part of it.
Got you. And then, Melissa, again, I'm tagging along here for the swimming pool. Not so much bag, but for Maricosta, can you explain what happened with that program, or if it's still ongoing, or is it available to our public? Because I know we helped maintain it, and we used to.
So we used to, but when the new joint use agreement with the school district was renegotiated and updated a couple of years ago, those operations did go back to Maricosta, so they operate it fully now. But we do, we do have access to it, just in a similar way to how we have access to other facilities, and so the aquatics team has swim practice over there about three hours a week, is my understanding. So we still have access to the facility, but we don't operate it any longer, so we don't do the reserve. I'm sorry?
Nothing to the public.
We don't. They may still provide some club access or rentals, but yeah, we are no longer operating it for them.
Thank you.
And one of the reasons that we stepped back is because there just was not enough time, you know, they're fully programmed with their kind of programs, and so they weren't providing access to us. So that's hardly at all, I mean, you know, so, yeah. Okay. Councilmember Franklin.
Yes. So pickleball, pickleball, pickleball. Any more courts anywhere?
So the best thing I can offer about pickleball is, we did add pickleball lines to the tennis courts one and two at Manhattan Heights, which allows the use of either tennis or pickleball in those courts. So that was an advantage, especially during drop-in times, because they're now able to activate all the courts at Heights during those times.
Are the neighbors okay with that?
We have not had it, knock on wood, but yes, have not heard any negative feedback related to that choice. And then, of course, the six at the middle school were a great addition. We do not have any plans to add additional courts at this time.
Okay. Well, I mean, is it in the thought process, like, if any sort of opportunity? I mean, I know where you looked at the play and, play and what?
Pay and play facility.
Play and play, yeah. But it's not going to work out there to, like, put one or two there, right?
So it is a decision that you will still have the opportunity to make, but we did a giant survey and outreach meeting, and footsall by far was the option that was preferred by the community members.
Right, okay.
And with the residents and the parking and the impact, it is probably not the best location for pickleball courts.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
No foosall sign. So dog park, I noticed it was dropped, removed from PMP on slide number 13. Anything come up in the discussions about, I recommended before, about using the sidewalk behind the marine baseball field? It's already fenced, it's already got benches, it's got parking, you know, it's fenced at the skate park, so that won't be interfering?
So it is, it is still being looked at. Nothing has been decided yet. There, you know, different opinions about what would make the best sense in terms of adding the footsall court and accommodating a dog park, so that is still to be determined, but we have not forgotten about that suggestion, definitely. And I just wanted to point out, it's kind of a semantics thing. Expand dog parks was taken off, but enhance dog parks is still on there, and so it's just focusing on the current ones we have, just not adding new ones, but thinking about needing a solution for marine is still very much in the plans.
Okay, great. And then, I just had a thought while discussing all of this. We've got, we know funding's an issue with the Scout House and the like. Any way to combine Scout House and library services and get, you know, dig into the fund there, the library fund that way?
It's kind of far down the road, I mean, you'd have to, there's, well, sure, maybe, but I, my, I'm going to answer for you, because I don't want the staff in this position, but scout and seniors have, like, they've programmed their spaces, and that's what they're designing to.
Okay.
I think, right?
What's your thought?
It would further delay the Scout House project, because we have the entitlements done for a certain project, most of the plans are done, and so anything where we redesign the project to fit a different need would definitely extend that timeline quite significantly.
Yeah, but if it gets the money to finally get things moving.
Creative, creative idea.
All right, so, thank you.
Councilmember Tornay.
Just to piggyback on what Councilmember Franklin was proposing, I mean, I think as far as the library fund and being able to use that in other locations, I mean, I know that we're in discussions right now for use of parking lot three and the bank building, and then also, you know, how we can best use those funds. So we can, that's part of the discussion, right, is perhaps expanding or incorporating a library space in parking lot three, or is that under consideration at all?
So in the historical, in the historic conversations, kind of the impetus for it was east side library services, because there are those residents who, because there used to be at MBACK, there used to be a library, so there have, over the decades, been people who don't feel like the library services are adequate on the east side, and so I think the second facility has always been kind of looking at on the east side, so, but that's certainly, you know, everything is open at this point. It would just need to be done in partnership with LA County.
And then, would the funds need to be used in just one location? Is it a possibility to use it in two locations, either one on the east side and some of it to improve an existing location on the east side, and then use some of the funds on one of our available spaces that are new?
I think it would depend on what both projects are, right? And we'd have to cost that out and see how the $12 million fits in with that.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, you could also use those funds for employees, you know, if the teens, you know, people are saying we want more hours, funds can be used for that, too.
And they are looking at the current library as well, in terms of that analysis. I will say, all of it would need to be negotiated with LA County Library, because they are in control of those funds, and in talking about a new facility, there might be potential, you know, desire to own that facility if they're going to build a facility, so there's a lot of things to still be talked about.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see. When you were talking, when Councilmember Franklin brought his idea for a dog park, or, you know, little dog run, and then you mentioned footsall, isn't footsall over at, like, towards the pay and play area, and then the dog park is over by the, is it not over by the soccer field on the other side, or over by the rocket ship park?
Well, no, I mean, the one that I was talking about is you got the soccer field there. If you head north on that sidewalk there and go beyond the soccer field, there's this beautiful big sidewalk and grassy area and trees, and it's already fenced off, or you'd have to maybe put in one set of fences.
We have had some community input that it is too far to take the dogs from, like, the parking lot area, but I will tell you, the Parks and Rec Commission is still working on this, and will still come back to you with a proposal.
Great. I kind of thought that was a good idea.
You can add there.
But there's not, I mean, there's not, I mean, footsall, it's not, it doesn't compete with the need for footsall, because it's on a different.
Other than it would affect the current dog park, and so if that is, so the idea would be to remove the building, put in a footsall court, and that's where the dog run is, so you just need to build in another, you know, option which could be nearby, or it could be in another location.
I sort of understand. Go ahead, Councilmember.
I guess I want to follow up and ask, when will there be proposals for how to utilize that space? Since, returning to council, 2022, there's been various ideas for what to put in place of the pay and play, whether to recondition that structure, the improvement, or to demolish it, and then it opens it up to a number of different options, including footsall, but to the extent that the community is looking for more open space, I'm just wondering, in what shape might we see this and when, so we can begin to get public input on this proposal?
So we have a lot of input already in terms of the desire for the footsall court, but as a preliminary step, especially if the council is eager for action, which I know Parks and Rec Commission and staff are, just because that building has been sitting there, you know, empty for a few years at this point, kind of a quicker solution would be to demo the building and put in just turf, so have open space, which also is a benefit for the community, while I believe council wanted to wait till the needs assessment was determined and additional choices were made. We did plan to come back to you in August or September with that proposal for your consideration, to let you know how much that would cost, what the timing of that would be, and then still hear your input about other options.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, are there other questions? Okay, thank you, Melissa. I'm going to open it up to public comments about the Park Master Plan. If you have any comments, please come down. Seeing none, turn to Zoom.
No request on Zoom.
Okay, closing public comment. Okay, so, let's see. So does anybody have any comments, would they like to make a motion, or, yes, Council Mayor Protem?
I'm going to start with a comment, and perhaps it leads to a motion, and that is simply to thank staff, but also to Parks and Rec Commissioners present and past who have worked on this master plan for many years, both as a full commission and also as a subcommittee, to try and come up with a comprehensive plan for our community. We know we're built out. We know our residents want more park space in our condensed city of less than four square miles, I think it's 3.86 square miles. There's not a whole lot of room to place new park amenities, but I appreciate the creativity of staff, the effort to try and gain community input, and to try and do what we can. I appreciate that chart with the quick wins, midterm and long term. We know we need a community pool, but paying for it is a huge challenge. We know our community is eager to get this scout and senior center built after, what, 15 years, and a number of residents have contributed towards it, but there's a differential again, it's a matter of budget. So I appreciate the effort that all have put into this, and look forward to bringing back some of these specific proposals, can we move forward in implementing this larger plan?
Yeah, thank you. I actually think this is one of the better master plans that I've seen, because I really appreciate the quick wins, the mid-range projects, the long-term vision. It was really clear to me what has, you know, been removed or added, and I think that's really, really helpful. We're a very active community, and it, you know, parks and recreation mean different things to different people. I still don't know what footsall is. That's fine.
It's like soccer.
Soccer.
Yeah, I like soccer.
Yeah, there you go.
It's a foosball, because I'm really good at that, but, you know, it means different things, you know, it's everything from libraries, right, to ceramics, to aquatics, to everything. I was also struck by the image there of the park, is it parkour workout facility there on Veterans Parkway, because I walk my dogs, you know, on Veterans Parkway often, and we often go there, and she gets a drink, she's licensed and vaccinated, by the way, but, and I don't notice the condition of it when I'm walking in it, and to see the picture when you're looking at it, you're like, oh my God, like, it's really illuminative and, you know, really shows the need, and there's a lot of support for that. So I've made a motion, you know, you've heard, you've heard a couple of themes up here, you know, scout and senior house, scout and senior house. I appreciate staff trying to help us understand what the holdups are, and I appreciate that. I trust now that staff. And I appreciate that. I trust now that staff, well, staff has always known the urgency. But, you know, that'll be so exciting when that is done. But we all up here have given, you know, signals that we want that to be done. You know, aquatics remains important. But, you know, I'd love to see the school district come to the table for real, also with, you know, improvements to beg, et cetera. So, but I've made a motion to, you know, accept the update. I guess is that what the actual motion would be? Approved. Yeah, I've made a motion to approve the updated Parks Master Plan. It's been seconded by Councilmember Tournay. If there's any comments or questions, if not, I'll call for the question. Parks make life better. Oh, and also always more dog stuff.
Motion passes 5-0.
Mark Lehman cracks up every time I say that. Because it's an old, it's an old state, California State Department of Recreation tagline. And it's been out of commission for years, but I think it's hilarious and true. Thank you. Great job, everybody. See, my voice sounds funny. Okay. Oh, item number 22. Okay, hi.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Holworth, members of the City Council. I'm Jeff Page, your Utilities Manager. And team and I are pleased to present to you our newly developed Cross Connection Control Plan. The plan is not only required by the state of California, but it's also a critical component to keeping our drinking water supply safe. So with us this evening is subject matter expert and consultant John Graham to present.
Great.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the city's Cross Connection Control Compliance Plan. This is the second step in a three-step compliance process, the first of which was your adoption of the municipal code changes last November. The plan is essentially a how-to guide on how the city is going to comply with the requirements of the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. A little history, going back to 1987, the program was governed by the California Code of Regulations Title 17. It only took about 10, 15 years before our understanding of cross connection control and the health effects changed to the point that we had outlived the guidance that water systems were able to use to govern their programs, to essentially do what they knew they needed to do to protect public health. And so in the late 90s, water systems started to lobby, then the Division of Drinking Water, now the Water Board, for updates to Title 17. In the late 90s, we had a draft revision to Title 17, even went out to public comment period. But because of other drinking water contaminant issues, regulations coming down from the EPA, that was shelved. But the efforts to update Title 17 on the part of the water sector did not die. This all came to a head in 2017 when most of the water agencies in California, I'm talking about the advocacy groups like CWA, California Water Agencies, the American Water Works Association, California Municipal Water Association, all banded together to back Assembly Bill 1671, which mandated the Water Board to update Title 17 because we were at the point where customers were looking at us as overreach in regards to protecting public health because the regulations were so outdated. Part of that bill gave the Water Board the option of instead of a regulatory package, which takes a very long time and is difficult to get through the process, to use a policy handbook, which is an enforceable guidance that has the full force and effect of law, but can be modified. And that's how we're working today. The handbook was effective last July. And the first deadline for the city, for all public water systems in California, is to submit a compliance plan by the 1st of July of this year. The Water Board is going to be inundated with plans. If you can imagine, every permitted water system in California is going to be submitting one of these plans. So it's probably going to take several months for the city to get a response from the Water Board. There will likely be comments, requested changes, and we will be making those changes as time goes on. This will be very much a living document, just as the policy handbook is a living document. As a matter of fact, today, the Water Board approved the second revision to the policy handbook. And that just underscores the benefit of having a document that can be not easily, but amended as our approach and thoughts to certain problems change. Sorry, didn't advance that first slide. I'll pay better attention. So I know Jeff covered this last November with you, but it bears repeating, just what is a cross connection? And it is an interconnection between the potable water supply and any substance that you don't want to have in your drinking water supply, whether that's a liquid, a gas. And if you think about the prevalence of products you store around your home or business and whether or not you want to have those in your drinking water supply, it is quite expansive. One thing I want to note is the definition contains the word potential. So that changes the perspective, the question that the water system has to ask from, you know, what is to what if? And that creates a challenge when going out and doing the hazard assessments. It also creates a challenge in helping our customers understand because at a point in time, they may not have a private well energized in pumping water backwards through the water meter. But just having a private well creates the potential for that backflow. And that's how the water systems are required by the handbook to respond and protect the drinking water system. Because ultimately, first and foremost, I'm going to say this several times tonight, this is a public health protection program. Now, interestingly enough, this theory of backflow and cross connections kind of got its jumpstart right here in this region. Back during the Second World War, a troop shift left Long Beach Harbor, made it only a short distance out and had to turn around because while it was at port, they had interconnected the drinking water supply with the sewage system.
Oh, dear.
So Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and other water suppliers in the area unofficially banded together to explore what happened. And is this happening in our water system in other places? And how do we prevent it? So research was began and continues to this day just up the road at the University of Southern California at the Viterbi School of Engineering. They have the Foundation for Cross Connection Control and Hydraulic Research, where they study this issue and understand. And they've been tasked with doing studies for the EPA and other agencies to help understand not only what cross connections are, but how do we prevent it? So how does backflow occur? You need three things for it to occur. First, you have to have a hazard. And as I mentioned earlier, just around your own home, think about all the substances you have that you wouldn't, you want to have in your drinking water system. These are often matters or subject of convenience for us, cleaning products, lubricants. And we store them. Sometimes we handle them carelessly. Using a Miracle-Gro weed and feed to water your lawn, fertilize and water your lawn at the same time is a convenient feature. But because of its hydraulic connection to your water supply, you are inadvertently interconnecting your drinking water supply with chemicals. The next thing you need is that cross connection. And again, those can be permanent piping arrangements. They can be temporary connections through your garden hoses. Most common thing I see in residential settings are improperly installed toilet tank fill valves, where customers have replaced or rebuilt their toilet, purchased the one-size-fits-all arrangement, installed it, turned the water on, and it worked. My work is done. Look, honey, I am a plumbing expert. They didn't adjust it properly, and now they have a submerged inlet in their toilet tank. And they don't know that until the water system turns the water off for a repair. And of course, they're going to go through their flushing and water sampling and go home, knowing that they did their part to keep the water safe. The family comes home at night, starts to make dinner, and they notice blue water coming out of their kitchen tap. They're lucky. They have a tidy bowl in their tank. They have a visual indicator that tells them that they're making dinner with toilet water. The rest of us are the unlucky ones. And I have seen this time and time again. So it's just something, yes, I know the yuck factor is high. Just wait. The EPA did a study, and they found that over 95% of homes had a cross connection with a health hazard. So they are prevalent. So the next thing we need is a hydraulic condition. Now, this can be a back pressure event that can be created by a pump or elevated piping or even thermal expansion as water heats up in a closed pipe. It can create high pressures. It could be something like a back siphoning event from someone hitting a fire hydrant and creating a sudden demand on the water system. And it takes time for the distribution system to respond to that increased demand. Water pressures drop for a period of time. And those negative pressures can draw back in those contaminants into the drinking water supply. It could be something as simple as a pump starting and stopping. When you start or stop a pump in a water system, it creates a pressure wave. And those bottom halves of the wave can be negative pressure events that can last 20, 30 seconds. And again, the industry has researched this and found that they are very common in well-managed, well-operated drinking water systems. At that point... Thank you. You have a backflow event. I know in earlier meetings, there was questions about, you know, backflow events. We've had some right here in this region. Los Angeles International Airport had a, one of the terminals shut down for several days because of a drinking water contaminant from a temporary connection. A few years ago, down in Long Beach, the entire resort area, including the Queen Mary, was on a do-not-use order for several days because crude oil was pumped back into the distribution system. And that resulted in the replacement of several thousand feet of large diameter water main. So not only does this have a health impact, it can have a financial impact on water systems as well. And Corpus Christi, Texas, I know we're not in Texas, but that entire town was on a do-not-use order for several days because of a backflow event. So backflow is real. I know we haven't had anything reported here in this town, but it is happening. We just haven't had reported incidents.
Okay. Sir, I'm going to ask if you could, you've got a lot of slides to go through here. We understand, I think, that we have to do this and the need for this.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I'll speed along. So there are many commercial products. I brushed on some of them. There's been a lot of talk about our four-legged friends today. So I wanted to share a picture. This is a commercial product that you can purchase and install on your drain system and connect to your water supply to dispose of your dog waste. But because of poor design, it interconnects your drinking water supply with your waste system. I don't think anybody gets up in the morning and says, I'm going to contaminate the water system today. They're out to solve a problem, fix something, and they inadvertently cause problems. Plumbing systems repairs often go uninspected for code compliance. So this is another reason the Water Board has required the water systems to enhance their cross connection control program. The plan itself requires 10 elements. I'll go over these briefly and then spend a little bit more time one time later. Operating rules or ordinance, you've already done that. Hazard assessments, backflow prevention, cross connection control program coordinator, certified backflow prevention assembly testers and specialists, assembly testing, record keeping, incident response. My opinion, most important, public outreach and education, and local entity coordination. You've updated your ordinance. You've done a great job. And quite frankly, you're miles ahead of many other cities. Hazard assessments, by far, this represents the largest task in the third step, which is implementing your program because staff is going to need to evaluate every service connection and assign a risk factor to it. The assessments consist of an initial assessment of your entire system and then, much like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, once you're finished, you start over. There are also triggered assessments, changes in occupancy, modifications of building, et cetera. Risk classes are none. In other words, everything's in code compliance. We're good. Low, which are aesthetics, if it gets back in the drinking water supply, it will be a nuisance only. Taste, odor, that type of thing. And then finally, there's high risks, substances that if they get in the drinking water supply could harm people. The city, before they wanted to roll this out to the customers, they wanted to get their own house in order. So they did a hazard assessment on city facilities. There is a typo here. They found 21 unprotected services at high-risk buildings. And they've addressed all but one of those, which is actually here at City Hall. We're working on that and have it done in a couple of months.
Oh, boy.
Backflow prevention, we have to have a, once we've identified a risk, we have to prevent the backflow from occurring. And there are different types of assemblies or approaches to make that happen, from internal piping changes on the part of the customer to the installation of a testable assembly at the point of service. Low hazard services, dealing with those aesthetics, we could use a double-check valve assembly. Those are essentially two check valves in a row, gives some redundancy. If it fails, it's going to be a piece of pipe and, you know, we don't really going to hurt anybody, right? But there are a lot of high hazards involved. Just about every high hazard service is going to require the installation of a reduced-pressure principal backflow prevention assembly. The city already has a large number of these already installed based on previous assessments. And then there will be some high hazards, ultra-high hazard special cases like sewage connections and things that may actually require a physical separation between the water service and the receiving vessel. Ultimately, any repair or corrective actions is going to be the customer's responsibility. Cross Connection Control Program Coordinator, one of the supervisors has been assigned to this role, and they'll be responsible for tracking program compliance and general administration of the program. The state requirement is that you have a dedicated person on staff if you have over 3,000 service connections. And as you know, the city has, you know, about 15,000 service connections that they're working with. This is a picture of city staff actually installing a backflow preventer at one of the unprotected services they had found. Certified testers and specialists, I think this, above all else, speaks to the importance of this. In the drinking water sector, certification is required, whether you're operating a water treatment plant or a water distribution system. You can become certified to operate a water treatment plant by taking a correspondence course and a online exam at a testing site. To be a backflow prevention assembly tester, you have to take a 40-hour course of instruction. You have to take two written exams and then a hands-on, proctored, closed-book exam testing all the major types of assemblies. And if you make a mistake, they'll say you've erred your procedure and we'll see you in three months. And you get to try it again. In three years, a water operator renews their certification with a check and contact hours. Backflow testers have to go back through the whole testing process again, both written examinations and a proctored hands-on. It's that important because this is the single greatest risk to our, the safety of our drinking water supply. Once the assemblies are installed, these certified testers then test them annually after the initial testing. There's also requirements if they're relocated or repaired. So it's not enough just to install them. Nothing's forever. You have to make sure they're working, and you have to be properly certified to make the repairs. Record keeping, well, as you know, in today's world, if it's not documented, you didn't do it. So we have to have very good record keeping to give us a legally defensible program because you never know when we're going to have to defend our program in court. And so the state recognizes that and requires comprehensive documentation of our program as well as a mandated records retention program. as well as a mandated records retention program. Incident response, one of the challenges of justifying a program is, well, where are all the incidents? The EPA released a study, and they found that while the data supports 50% of water distribution disease outbreaks being attributed to a cross connection, the number's probably higher than that because of a number of factors. Utilities are reluctant to self-report for various reasons. Backflow is very transient, the hydraulic conditions, by the time the water department is told that there's a problem, they get out there, everything's changed. And also, there is a extended exposure to onset of illness time period. And if you look at some of the more recent backflow reports, most of them are attributed to soda dispensers, drinking carbonators. Because when you have a backflow incident with a drinking carbonator, you have high levels of copper, you ingest that, you've got about three hours maybe, and you're, you know, suffering effects, shall we say. So it makes it very easy for the medical teams to vector in on the actual cause of the incident. So reporting is mandated. Key piece is public education and outreach, because we can't be everywhere at all times. So we have to engage our partners, and that is the customers, because we have a mutual benefit in this thing called cross connection control. We can reduce new cross connections, help them understand how to keep their plumbing systems safe. So the team is going to be leveraging every opportunity, public events, web, and social media, to get the word out and start talking about backflow and helping people understand Local entity coordination, you're very lucky, it's one of the best teams I've worked with, because when we got together with the fire department, community development, code enforcement, it was clear right from the start, it was one team I was talking to. There were no camps, there was no us and them. The city of Manhattan Beach has one team addressing this problem. And that really helps, because gaps can get created between departments.
Just like air gaps.
Yes.
Our little water engineer here.
How about that? Thank you. The irony is, while the Water Board mandated water systems to develop a local entity coordination program, there's no such mandate on those local entities to cooperate with the water department. So kudos to the team here. There are some timelines for implementation. This is not going to happen overnight. I could say this is going to take years, which it will, but it's going to take forever, because you're going to be on this for the duration. But we have developed some timelines. The team will be working through the system in a systematic process, trying to address the highest hazards first and working through. There are some timelines that are going to stretch out maybe as far as 10 years. These timelines are subject to change based on Water Board revision and input, because one thing that the Water Board didn't give us were firm timelines. There is going to be an impact on property owners. Unprotected cross connections will need to be addressed, whether internally or at the point of service. The costs for those corrective measures will vary based on the installation, whether it's changes, minor changes to internal piping, installation of a hose bib vacuum breaker would cost all of $10, or installation of a backflow preventer. And those conditions, based on whether it's in the pavement or whatnot, are going to vary widely. So it's really difficult to say it's going to cost this much to install a backflow preventer. The team is working with contractors and design teams to come up with solutions to the unique problems that you have, because one of the biggest challenges is going to be the location of where we're going to put these backflow preventers. And they've come up with some great solutions, and we're going to be working with the teams to fully vet those out. Property owners will be responsible for the annual testing and maintenance. All testing of customers' assemblies will be done by third-party contractors, and all the internal assemblies will be tested by city staff. This is very much about public health protection, regulatory compliance, which is important, we don't have a choice on that, but also the customer service standards. We want customers to have full faith that when they turn the tap on, the water coming out is safe to drink.
Sort of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it is. And also, you know, if, I've worked with systems, I've been doing this for a very long time, and I've had the misfortune of having to issue boil water advisories to customers. And I'll tell you, it takes a long time for customers regain the confidence
I bet.
That the water's safe to drink, regardless of the circumstances. So with that...
So with that, staff is recommending the adoption of the City of Manhattan Beach Cross Connection Control Plan, prepared in accordance with the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook, and authorized the middle-tier state water resources control boards, Division of Drinking Water, for final approval as required by state drinking water regulations. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, I'll turn to my colleagues, but I'll first say you truly are a subject matter expert. You probably could write all the books on it. So to Mayor Protem.
I just wanted to confirm how, what we're being asked to do as a council tonight, and how it compares with what we did last November with ordinance number 24-0004. So my understanding is we already amended our code. This has to do with adopting this plan that we're required to submit and then authorizing the submission. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. We, as you may recall last time, we let council know that we would bring it back before, our plan before council, just to get your buy-in on it, to know what's going on as a matter of transparency.
To understand implementation.
Understand implementation and know what we're submitting to the state.
Got it. And the additional cost that might be added in terms of the number of personnel, it was a list of personnel and their different responsibilities. I didn't see an exact fiscal analysis in terms of what we're looking at by doing so, but we don't really have a choice, do we?
So we, no, we have to comply with all this, with all the qualified people. And we just upgraded one of our positions in environmental compliance to a backflow prevention specialist. So we have the qualified personnel for that, and that was just approved through the budget's process.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Attorney.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. I know that you gave kind of the lower range of what implementation would look like for a residential property owner, but so like, you know, from $10, what's the absolute worst-case scenario?
Well, it is very much a regional thing, depending on what the local plumbers and contractors are charging. But, you know, for a three-quarter inch assembly in asphalt, you could be looking at about $3,000, $3,500, depending on cost permits and other things. I'm always very hesitant to quote prices, because local pricing, you know, is hard to predict.
Okay.
Market forces will prevail, though.
And then, as far as the testing cycle, and to make sure people are in compliance and things are working properly, is, what's the proposed testing cycle for residential property?
It'll be annual testing. If they have a backflow prevention assembly, is a testable assembly, it has to be tested at installation to make sure it's working when, once it's installed, and then annually after that. So there'll be, you know, every year, the department will send out letters to the customers saying, "Hey, you need to get this tested, here's a list of technicians that can do this for you, that we've vetted for certification." And then we'll give them a period of time to get it tested. There might be a need for a reminder notice, follow-up, that type of thing.
And what would be an estimate of that testing service?
Usually, it's around $100 for a test.
And then, and then what if somebody argues, or we have resident who uses a whole-home water filtration system, and they say, you know, "We already have a system in place." Does that affect what we're talking about here?
No, because it, we are concerned, of course, about the customer's plumbing, but ultimately the public water supply, and if they have cross connections within their property, but they're treating their own water that they're drinking, that doesn't help the people down the street that don't have that treatment system. So we have to keep the public water supply safe.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Franklin.
So essentially, when someone submits plans for a new home or remodel, then all this, all the cross connections are evaluated then and engineered properly?
That's one of the steps. Existing homes and businesses will also need to be assessed.
So in your experience, most of the problem comes when people try to do their own repairs, or they've got an old house and they're fixing it up, or...
Yes, to all of them. As modifications occur, people don't pay attention to the plumbing code, and compromises are made, you know. New homes, for example, in housing tracts, front-home landscaping comes with the home, backyard is on the homeowner. Well, it's a choice between drapes or a landscaping system for the backyard. Well, they're going to, they're going to go all out for the drapes, and they're going to chance on the, on the backflow protection for the backyard. And that, that's how things start to go off the rails.
And so, did you say that there's an annual inspection?
There's an annual test, it's a function.
Annual test for every home?
No, every backflow preventer.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So if there's not one at your home, you don't have to worry about it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem.
Just a quick follow-up. There was a description of the cross connection plan elements, which include a hazard assessment. How does this plan look at seismic risk?
Seismic risk?
Correct.
That's on system reliability and your ability to maintain system pressures. And so you have to assume that your system is going to lose pressure at some point in time, whether that's from a seismic event or a shutdown for repairs. Your water system is going to lose pressure at some point in time, so you have to plan for that. So it's kind of indirectly built into it.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. This, no doubt, has had a lot of forethought, and this is directed from the state, but inevitably, we're going to an awful lot of expense going forward. And invariably, a large seismic event could undermine multiple pieces of infrastructure as part of our system that we will have paid for over many years, correct?
Correct. And that's something that the system has to evaluate, and towns do that. I'll give you an example, perfect example. I work with the Town of Paradise up in Northern California that burned down several years ago. One of the things that they suffered was a massive defensorization, and their, a lot of their houses were on foundations, raised foundations, which was a pool of contaminated water that then backflooded into their drinking water supply during that period. So when they rebuilt, they went to a mandatory protection program. Every water service in that town, all 8,000 connections, has a backflow preventer on it, because they're not going to go through that again.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Attorney, did you have another question?
I do, just to help me visualize and understand this process. So is the goal to eventually have the backflow preventer at every single property?
That's not my understanding. This city did not adopt or is promoting a mandatory protection program. Over time, it's safe to say that more and more connections will get protection as changes are made and identified, but the initial impact is not going to be to every service connection.
It's just when someone's rebuilding or remodeling is the plan? And then, just so conceptual, I can see what this is, is it just one device at an entry part where the water, where is it installed on a residential property?
It's required to be installed as close to the meter as practical. Now, given the locations of the water meters, it's not going to be right at the meter, it's going to be a few feet back, behind a wall or something like that.
Thank you. Okay, okay. No further questions, I'll turn over for public comment. Okay, oh, here comes the chamber. Here comes Jill Lampkin with the chamber. Welcome to your new role.
Good evening, Mayor Haworth, City Council. First of all, I want to say thank you to this whole team, because they engaged me very early through downtown to talk about how it would impact businesses. Obviously, now that I'm with the chamber, it's even more businesses it's going to impact. But one of the things that I want everyone to keep in mind is to continue to keep that line of communication open. And one of the questions that I had that I, we didn't have an answer to when we first met, I'm sorry to keep looking behind me, because they were, they're the subject matter experts, was when TI improvements happen on a commercial property, where does the burden lie in terms of the replacement of, or providing of the new equipment? And I don't know that that question is answered yet, but I just want to make sure that that stays in the realm of conversation, because that's important, obviously, to businesses.
Great, thank you. Other public comments in chambers? Okay, are there any on Zoom?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay. I see there's been a motion, and Councilmember Shirley, what is your motion?
Motion is to adopt the CCC plan with the state's new regulation in the CCC PH.
Okay, Councilmember Lesser.
Can we just get an answer to the question, I think, that was raised? It's a good one about commercial owners' responsibility.
The tenant improvements?
Tenant improvements. I believe I know the answer, but I want to hear it.
So in some cases, it would be on the tenant to actually install the backflow.
Tenant as opposed to the owner of the commercial property?
Yeah, because the building may not always need that backflow device, if it's a restaurant or something that, or another business that does require it. And then you have another business that doesn't require, it could be removed.
Interesting.
So that could be, our consultant mentioned that it is oftentimes written in the lease agreements.
Okay, thank you.
But to Jill's point, let's keep the chamber and the downtown business association involved in discussions. So that's a good point. So it's been moved by Councilmember Shirley to accept, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Franklin. Call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for all your hard work and expertise in trying to keep us safe.
Water safety.
Water under the bridge. Every time you mentioned the Water Board, though, I was thinking, I thought that was illegal. So anyway. I'm just, I'm so full of problems.
Good evening again.
Whoa, hey, Jeff. He popped up again.
So, yes, time for discussion on Waste Management's request to realign the diversion requirement as it relates to the city's franchise agreement. This evening, we have our Solid Waste Administrator, Anna-Luke Jones, and Leith Yezet, our consultant from HF and H Consultants.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Anna-Luke Jones with the Public Works Department. This is a very, very quick reminder of what diversion means. It means that you are either reducing your waste, reusing it, or recycling it, keeping it out of the landfill. This is an example of the recycling center that Waste Management takes all of our recycling to. This is the compost facility that all of our organic material is taken to. And on the left is the picture of the landfill that all of our landfill material goes to. As a friendly reminder, in the calendar year 2023, this is the performance of Waste Management's diversion in the way that they were able to eliminate materials from the landfill. Citywide, there are three different ways that material is collected. The hauler collects residential and commercial. We also have construction and demolition material that's collected in an open market, and then third-party or self-haul, where residents and businesses can self-haul their material. So Waste Management proposed 46% diversion at the agreement award. It was settled to be 50, and on the right, you could see their performance in diversion over the last couple of years of the contract. The two main challenges that created the diversion struggles are the elimination of transformation credit and projection of commercial recycling tons versus actual collected. This is a very busy chart, but in a nutshell, it gives all of the data regarding the liquidated damages that have been assessed and paid by Waste Management for noncompliance with their diversion rate. This is a summary of all the actions to date. Many meet and confer meetings, and we also had the pleasure of speaking with you at the February... And we also had the pleasure of speaking with you at the February 4 meeting as well, and given the direction to analyze and confirm that 37% is the maximum diversion rate that Waste Management can reasonably achieve, as well as analyzing what that valuation would be in terms of dollars and cents to the community. And with that, I'd like to take it, send it over to Leif. Sorry, I know we're all tired here. Send it over to Leif Ezet from HFNH Consultants to go over the analysis that was performed.
Welcome, Leif. It's been a while.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's getting late, so we're gonna get a little.
It's not that late. It's not that late. We're good. Everybody, we're good.
So I just have two or three slides to show you. We looked at what we thought Waste Management could get to reasonably. Remember, they can't transform waste for credit anymore. The Waste Energy Plan is closed. The state said no more credit for that sort of thing, so we think they could get to 37%. We made that estimate more than a year ago, and then as 24 turned out, they actually got the 37%. So we think that's a pretty good, a pretty good estimate. So that's what we've got there. So the council last time said, well, how do we value that? If we're gonna lower the diversion target, what do we think that's worth? So let's skip over to page 16 and kind of cut right to the chase. So we used two ways of doing this. In, in one approach, we said, well, you're gonna save the cost of paying for transformation. It's less costly to dispose of waste. So we came up with a valuation of 2.4% of rate revenue if you took that approach to evaluating, to evaluating velocity diversion. Alternatively, they have to pay a fee per ton for each ton they're short under your contract. That's another way of evaluating, valuing. It's about $25 a ton. That would come out to 1.6%. So I took two entirely different approaches to valuing it, averaged them together, came up with 2% as a reasonable way to go about it, and suggested phasing it in perhaps over two years at 1% a year, so we can bring the rates down to the rate pairs against the regular adjustments that otherwise would get. The last slide. So our conclusion is, we think it would be reasonable, and I believe Waste Management has agreed, to subtract 1% from each of the next two rate adjustments that they otherwise would be entitled to under the contract.
And for any of the community members that wonder, what is that going to mean in dollars and cents? This chart breaks down the type, the typical type of container, what the current, let me see if this works. Our spotlight is back. What, after the Prop 218 process, these are the rates right here that were approved, okay? If we went through this 1% drop this year, this would be the new rate. This would be the cost savings. So 35-gallon cart would be, it would drop 17 cents. 65-gallon cart, 23 cents, and this is per month, okay? And then for the commercial containers, you'll see, this is, you know, an example for these cubic yard bins serviced one time a week. So each service, it would be $1.80, 231, 276. And that, you know, going down is always a great thing. And also, just to note that the Prop 218 process does not have to be done again because it is only reserved for increasing rates to the payers, not decreasing. So council, we recommend that you choose one of the next three options. Either do nothing, which is maintaining the diversion requirement under the agreement at 50%. This slide has a typo. I apologize for that. Oh, no, you are. I'm sorry. It is, it is very late. I apologize for that. Adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement, enter into an amendment to the franchise agreement.
Maybe it is late for you.
You are gonna forgive me for this. I really am very sorry.
We will.
I, I really appreciate that. So adopting the resolution, and that will allow the city manager to enter into an amendment administratively, enacting those changes. And then lastly, you can direct staff to pursue another course of action. Thank you very much, and again, appreciate your forgiveness for that.
Thank you. Well, have we all forgiven her? And, okay, I'll ask my colleagues if you have any questions. No questions? Okay, or no? Joe, do you want to get to the?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I thought since you saw me, so.
I did see you.
Let me see. Going, going back to the presentation. So it was supposed to be at 50% diversion, and 37% was achieved?
In 2024.
There were a couple of years, there was more.
So it's a couple of years it was greater than?
32, 31, 32, and 37.
Okay, so what's the average then of the diversion reported?
So.
Yeah, with improvements achieved, 37.
Remember, they were able to count transformation at one time. So if you look in this figure two, the diversion reported was higher, was in the 40s, because they could count that. But now they can't count that anymore.
Right.
That's why it plumbly went into the mid 30s.
Okay. But, I mean, I'm just taking a simple look at it. If, if you've missed it by an average of, I don't know, maybe 12, 11 to 12, 13%, why just a 1% reduction in the, in the fees?
That's the only, that's what the cost impact is. So the, there was a very deliberate way of valuing it. It's, you know, $25 a ton is what the, you know, what the penalty is if you don't achieve it. Multiply that by the number of tons they're short, divide by the rate revenues, and that's what it comes out to. So I, I'm confident that that's their impact on their cost, their savings from, from doing it. There's, you can't really think about it in terms of, well, if you divert 10% less, we should pay 10% less. It doesn't work that way because you still have to dispose of the waste. If, if 10% of the waste disappeared somehow, and they didn't have to handle it, then, then perhaps it would be that way. But they're just changing it from doing it one way to another way. So the cost impact is much smaller than the diversion rate impact.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good question. Thank you, Leif. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comments. This is good for our consumers, okay, our residents, okay? Come on down, sir.
Place for the home team.
Always allowed to make public comments.
Hi, everyone. How's it going? Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm Eric with Waste Management, our WM. First of all, thank you, Anna, for the presentation, Leif, for the collaboration throughout the process. Council, thank you for allowing us to finally bring this item before you for consideration. We're all pleased that we're finally getting towards the finish line on this specific item. As alluded to by Leif, you know, other cities similar to Manhattan Beach are currently working with their haulers to address similar issues similar to Renardino Beach. A lot of it, again, driven by state law, as we all know. I love the state of California. A lot of progressive laws, and, you know, we have to adapt to some of those changes. Overall, we are in agreement with HF National City. We, fortunately, we can move forward. We do hope that we can continue our conversations as we move forward on additional items that we believe do merit some items to consider, such as the overall health of the agreement and the financial impacts of, are the current state of the agreement. So we do hope that we allow for consideration for additional items as we move forward past the diversion item, so we can continue to collaborate and move forward, and hopefully get the agreement to a more profitable and sustainable financial model for us, so we can continue to provide the same services you all are expecting. So thank you so much for allowing me to be here, and thank you for the consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment in chambers? All right, going to Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, I'll close. I thought your motion disappeared, Councilmember Lesser. Well, when I, yeah. Okay, so your motion is?
So I've made a motion to move forward with the requested action by staff, which is to authorize the request to adjust the solid waste diversion requirements and to secure a corresponding rate reduction. And I put it this way. I want to thank Leif and our outside consultant for helping to confirm what, what we needed to know. What we needed to know is what is the best expected diversion rate that we can expect? What we, as a community, agreed to do with our partner, Waste Management, was a 50% diversion rate. The laws have changed. The available facilities to be able to divert have changed dramatically since we entered into that agreement. So to the extent we wanted to confirm what was the amount that was feasible, we were able to get that analysis and data and got great value from our consultant. The next question is, how do we compensate our residents for the fact that our hauler realized some advantage by not having to divert as much of the waste? It's not a huge amount. More of this is the principle of the matter, but it's a small amount that will add up a bit over time. But it's the principle matter. I'm grateful to be making the motion to move forward with it.
And I seconded motion. So without any further ado, call for the question.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you also to Anna Luke for your work here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're the trash queen. At Bobby Bell, you didn't come down during public comments, man. I was sort of brokenhearted.
Thanks, Anna.
Thank you.
Have a blessed evening, Bobby.
God bless you all.
Always sounds like Christmas.
I know. I, yeah. Okay, hello, chief.
Mayor, according to the city clerk, that was part of your motion, right, to adopt the resolution?
It was. Thank you for seeking clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, are we on item 24? Okay, we are. Hello, chief.
Hello. I'm confused. I want you to know I will not be talking about.
Oh, the, oh, the, okay, got it. Yeah, I was like the bonds. I, it's radios. Go ahead. Sorry.
Once again, good evening, Mayor Haworth, members of City Council. I'm Rachel Johnson. You're Police Chief, and I'm here along with Director Brett Hauer to discuss the consideration of a resolution approving the intention to issue tax-exempt obligations, consider waiving formal bidding, and authorizing the purchase of mobile and portable radios in an amount not to exceed $3,584,056.72, and appropriating $3,625,870 from the general fund balance and adjusting general fund revenues by an equivalent amount in fiscal year 2026. I will first assess the context and timing of this purchase. Director Brett Hauer will discuss the financing of this matter. As this council and this community continue to prioritize public safety, it's important to recognize that advancements in communications technology occasionally render our equipment obsolete. And while we do replace individual pieces of equipment as needed, the police department conducts a full review of our public safety communications equipment every seven to 10 years to determine whether a comprehensive update's necessary. Our last major update took place in fiscal year 2018, and with that in mind, we recently completed a thorough assessment of our current communications inventory. And as a part of this process, we also evaluated the communication requirements for several major regional events that are on the horizon. The 2026 World Cup, the 2027 Super Bowl, and the 2028 Olympic Games, all of which will take place in close proximity to our city. And the likelihood that MBPD will be asked to participate meaningfully in some public safety aspect of these events is high. And as all of these events will involve collaboration with a multitude of stakeholders, our ability to communicate with our law enforcement partners will be a priority. One of the biggest ongoing challenges in the public safety sector is achieving seamless communication across different radio and wireless networks. This issue was highlighted in the 9/11 Commission Report, which recommended the development of a national interoperable communication system. We still haven't done that. But in response, the city has consistently invested in equipment that allows our first responders, including both police and fire personnel, to communicate with other agencies regardless of the systems they use. What we noted during our current review cycle was that a significant portion of our communications equipment is nearing the end of its useful life. Much of it is no longer supported by warranties, meaning we incur approximately $1,000 each time a unit needs repair. But more importantly, the aging equipment lacks the latest levels of security, reliability, and perhaps, most critically, interoperability with our regional partners. While the upcoming international events expected to bring increased activity and higher demands of public safety systems, it's imperative that we are proactive to ensure our teams have the best tools available. Through our review, we've identified new communications technology that meets current standards for interoperability and offers a higher level of security. These upgraded systems come with a seven-year warranty, which includes full hardware replays and technical support, something we currently lack as our equipment's out of warranty. By taking this step now, we ensure that our first responders are fully equipped, communicate, and respond effectively, not just today, but as we prepare for an unprecedented level of public safety activity in the coming years. In discussing our replacement needs with Motorola, we were also informed that the pricing for this equipment is expected to increase by 7% to 10% due to terrorist debt will take effect later this month. To avoid these cost increases and secure more favorable pricing, we should consider looking for, moving forward with a purchase before June 27, 2025, which is why we are before you here today. I thank the council for their consideration of this matter, and I will turn it over to Director Brett Hauer to, to discuss the proposed financing of this project.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening again. Thank you, Chief Johnson. So as she described, during our recent budget development process, this item came before us from the police and fire departments. But due to the significance of the cost, we, the item was deferred. So in the last few weeks, as we learned about the potential increased pricing due to tariffs, we expedited our research and on our various financing options, and now we're here before you tonight. So as you know, we're also in the middle of preparing certificates of participation financing for the property the city acquired at 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So in, in discussions with our municipal finance advisor, K&amp;N Public Finance, and our bond counsel, we described the need to replace the public safety radios in the near future and the desire to lock in the pre-terror pricing. And that's kind of what led us to the path here tonight. So three financing options were analyzed to determine the most fiscally prudent option. Ideas that we explored included doing a lease purchase plan through Motorola itself, doing a Bank of America Master Equipment Lease, or we could potentially issue additional tax-exempt COPs in line with the COPs we're issuing for 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So what would be done is like a Series A would be the property, and then Series B would be the equipment purchase. So at the quoted purchase price of nearly $3.6 million, the average annual debt service cost is estimated at about $687,000 per year at current interest rates over a seven-year term. And so, you know, we are still finalizing the financing details, but the preference would be to have our debt service payments commence on January 1, 2027, which would put us into fiscal year 27 for the first debt service payment. But as we are finalizing these details, we will be taking a report to the Finance Subcommittee, tentatively scheduled for July, Monday, July 28. And then we'll be coming back to City Council on August 5 for final approval of the financing plan and, you know, bringing all the required documents that are required to issue the COPs. And I also wanted to note, one of our budget goals for the next few years will be to establish some sort of an equipment replacement fund. So that way, the next time this equipment is at the end of its useful life, we'll hopefully have some, you know, reserve funds in the bank that we could purchase them outright rather than having to explore financing options.
Great.
So this concludes our presentation. At this time, we would request for you to consider waiving the formal bidding requirements in accordance with our municipal code provision for sole-source purchases, authorize the purchase for Motorola for an amount not to exceed $3,584,056.72, and appropriating $3,584,057 for the purchase. And then we would be adjusting the revenues for the anticipated bond proceeds, all in fiscal year 26. And additionally, by adopting Resolution 2581, the city will be able to take advantage of these lower financing costs because it is a resolution identifying our intention to issue tax-exempt bonds. And I also wanted to mention, I believe, two representatives from Motorola are actually on Zoom in case there are any additional questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Director Brett Hauer? Councilmember Shirley?
Thank you. Couple of questions. One, Chief, you don't have to come up, but thank you for, you know, you had the seven-to-10-year comprehensive study, and this being the seventh year, so it's good to be able to get that early on. So appreciate you mentioning that you do a comprehensive, because that was one of my questions. How did we not see this coming? But since you do your analysis seven to 10 years, and this is at the low end, so appreciate that. The rest of my questions are for the Finance Director. So a quick question. The $687,000 debt service is coming out of what fund?
It would come out of the general fund.
Okay. So that's coming out of the general fund, and that was not part of this year's budget that we adopted? You mentioned that it won't be till 2027. You mentioned that it won't be till 2027 that this would kick in, so we would revisit it next year?
Yeah.
Or with the next budget? So question one is, how was the seven-year term determined? That's, that's, you know, is it typical for COPs for a purchase of like this, is seven years, or is it, can you extend it out to lower the payment?
We could. We did explore options of five years, seven years, and 10 years. However, we didn't feel 10 years was appropriate considering the useful life of the equipment is only considered to be seven years. We would want to match our financing with the useful life of the equipment.
Okay, makes sense. So if I take the, the debt service of 687 and multiply that by seven years, I get 4.8 million?
Due to the timing of the debt issuance, so we'd be issuing in April, we just went through this in a rather lengthy meeting this afternoon. So we're, it would actually be six payments at $687,000, but we say it's a seven-year financing.
Gotcha. Just doing the math.
Yes, thank you.
So, and then the series, so series, so there, the Series A would be seven-year term, and I assume Series B would be a longer term because it's land?
Correct. So the way we're structuring it right now, so it would be one official statement would be issued, and Series A would be for the land purchase, the 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and that would be a 30-year issuance, and then Series B would be the equipment.
No more questions, thank you.
Thank you so much for those questions, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem. I can't wait to call you this mayor.
I want to compliment city staff for being proactive, including our city manager, for bringing a sense of urgency to try and take advantage of this more beneficial pricing. But I do have some just technical questions, and maybe I better direct them to the chief if I could.
Yes, please.
So first of all, I'm assuming that the Motorola radio is the gold standard, and that's why the fact that there's going to be rising tariffs on this brand of radio is motivating the urgency besides the, you know, immediacy of the date when these tariffs would go into effect. Is that correct?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. We tried out a number of different radios as a part of our vetting process to see if radios that were from less well-known brands that were purported to do the same job were good for our employees. So we did, we did a lot of TNE, a lot of testing before we came back and decided that really Motorola is the, is the manufacturer that does what we need to do it, the way that our folks are comfortable doing it. So we, we did try to test different radios at a variety of price ranges, but what we came back with was none of those were of the quality and had the features that we were looking for.
So if we were going through the normal process and not waiving formal bidding, but going through a bid process, would that be for this specific radio, or would it be for some potential comparable radio, which it sounds to me that your, your team have done some assessment on and determined that the Motorola is the one that we really want?
The Motorola is the one that we really want. It does, it has all the features that we wanted, it has the lifespan that we want and we need, and things that we think that even though the usable life's seven years, we'll actually probably get a little more out of that because there's some technology that's built in there that it's not quite being used now, but it's supposed to be used in a couple of years. And so it's just like buying a phone, so we would definitely want to go with Motorola.
So help me out with the bidding piece?
Yeah.
Because that's what is really the substance of why we're dealing with this tonight.
Right.
So help me understand what the bidding process might have gotten us, separate and apart from this issue of tariffs now.
Well, I will, I will note, in your attachments, one of them was the invoice, there is a significant discount with this purchase of the Motorola radios, and so I don't know what other vendors would have brought to us in this regard, but, but because there is this general desire to use Motorola throughout the county, we were able to get, to get some, some more favorable pricing.
Okay, and just, I think I know the answer, but I want to confirm. In terms of the operability with the South Bay Regional Communications Authority, the RCC, and their radios, explain how these newer radios will interface with those and how this relates to perhaps vehicle radios?
For now, that communication will be seamless and really no different. You can, you can talk on the radio I have now and hear it on a new radio, but the emerging technological standards, and forgive me, I have a very kindergarten-level understanding of this, that we will be required to have in a couple of years, will render our current radios obsolete and also will not allow us to communicate with other law enforcement agencies outside of our region.
And that's where I'm going as the delegate to the RCC. I just wanted to better understand how these radios represent the new, the current configuration, the current design, and how they'll interface with the proposed CAD design and other changes that are coming our way through the RCC.
Well, it's important to note that the CAD changes, as you know as a delegate, we're doing, going to a new CAD RMS, is, is very different and apart from our radio communications. So what we do with our CAD does not necessarily have to be what we do with our radios and vice versa. They're two separate, but very important pieces of technology. With regard to RCC, they're one of the leaders in having meetings with us about this a couple of years ago to get us prepared for these communication changes because they too will have to adhere to this emerging standard.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Councilmember Franklin.
Yes, well, chief, it's, I've been trying to think of how to phrase this question, but really it's a compliment to the police, to our police force for the successful arrest, pursuit and arrest this morning. But that was through inter.
Operability.
Interagency.
Well, we stayed on that, I was listening to that pursuit during my morning commute and thinking about it like.
Like a podcast.
Well, it actually passed by me during my morning.
Oh, wow.
So I got to observe it in person, and it was in fact occurring as I heard it on the radio. But we actually didn't use any interoperability today because of some of the news choppers noted that we declined the CSP's offer of assistance. And so we handled it ourselves until we got to the city of Los Angeles where they did help us with the apprehension.
That was great. So I just encourage anybody that's hearing this is to look that up on any local news station. It was quite, or was it just Fox 11?
No, I think there were others, NBC.
It was on a few.
So, but didn't we have to do like once? I mean, didn't we have to talk to somebody once to say we got it?
Well, our dispatchers do that. They have their own dispatcher, dispatcher communication systems where they can say, hey, you know, we, we need this or we need that. That's how we request helicopter services from the CSP, which they were actually trying to scramble for us today during that pursuit. So dispatchers to dispatchers, they can talk to each other pretty easily, and that's how we typically communicate to get, to get those resources started.
Okay, well, congratulations to your team.
Thank you, sir.
I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, I'm gonna, oh, thank you, chief. Open it up to public comments. How about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Ternay, which is to adopt Resolution Number 25-0081, waive formal bidding, and then authorize the purchase of the mobile and portable radios in an amount not to exceed $3,584,056.72, and appropriating $36,3625,807 from the general fund revenues by an equivalent amount for anticipated bond proceeds in fiscal year 2026.
May I clarify something? I just, someone commented that I may have misspoke when I was stating the purchase price and the appropriation amount, so I just want to clarify that too. Those two numbers are different. Obviously, the purchase price with Motorola is for the purchase of the radios, but we will, are appropriating a slightly higher amount, the $3,625,807, because that does include a few costs of issuance for the debt issuance, and so we'll be adjusting the budget for that amount and then an equivalent amount in revenues. Thank you.
Okay, and that's been seconded in by Councilmember Sherlin.
Yep.
All right, call for the question over the radio.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great, and I just, I'm, you know, so glad that we are committing to, you know, this ongoing support for fabulous police department and to keep our residents safe, so thank you.
And fire.
Oh, yeah, and fire, and fire, of course. Thank you, Councilmember, thank you very much. Okay, all right. Let's see, wait a minute. Okay, sorry. So city council requests or reports, how about future agenda items? Was there anything about the trees, or no? Did we decide not, we can't really, not on this one? Okay, but no other?
I have one.
Okay.
Your honor, I would like for a future agenda item to come back, to direct staff to identify a mechanism to provide medical insurance to all council members and not just some. For example, people who work for CalPERS organization or people on Medicare don't get the same insurance benefit. Finding a solution would be in alignment with the city policy to provide health coverage to all council members.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Any other future agenda items? Okay, city attorney report?
The manager first.
Nope, she did it.
She did it already.
Hey, hey, keep up.
He's just trying to buy time, I know it. Let's see, 10:30? Okay, nothing tonight.
Okay, informational, no closed session. With that, I will adjourn. Wait, 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 I've got script. Okay, I need to tell you that our meeting on July 1st is canceled, so we are adjourning this meeting to a closed session on July 14th at 4:00 p.m. right here in the city council chamber. We are adjourned.